All right, we're gonna get started here. We have reconvened from closed session and I have nothing to report out. So we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:08 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, October the 25th, 2023. It is 6:08 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is being closed. Caption will be webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, October 27th, at 1:00 PM and Monday, October 30th, at 1:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.eltgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time per public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber, provided to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will move into our roll call, starting with Councilmember Rublaz.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spees.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. "We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endure because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders." Thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. And if I can get Reyna Torongo to lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, closed session.
And under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, and that first item being Item 4.1, the Disability Advisory Committee Annual Update. And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I'd just like to take your attention just north, northwest of our speaker podium. Mr. Steve Capps will be presenting the gentleman coffered with a goatee. He'll be leading the item here as we go on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As he said, my name is Steve Capps and I have the privilege tonight of presenting our annual report for the Disability Advisory Committee, where I've served for a number of years. And I thank you for the opportunity. And next slide. Our members, as you can see, all these people except for one have been there for many years. Val Shatra is our new member. And before we go into the report, I'd like us to recognize the passing of Karen Gressenmeyer and recognize that many contributions she made to the committee and city during her nearly 10 years on the committee. When she passed away in 2022, she was serving as our vice chair. Karen focused her attention on real-life impediments faced by herself, as well as her disabled friends and neighbors, as they navigated through life in our community. She was particularly interested in bus transportation and bus stops, as well as sidewalk upkeep improvements. She will be missed. But Karen would be the first one to say the committee must keep going. So earlier this year, we were pleased to have our new appointee Valerie Shatra join our committee as his newest member. She's a longtime resident of Elk Grove who has special interest in affordable housing solutions for disabled residents. She has already proved herself as an engaged and prospective member of our advisory committee. The history of our committee, it was four more than 20 years ago and has given us, as appointed representatives of the disabled community, direct input on policies and projects that might affect the disabled persons. During our monthly meetings, we routinely meet with city staff to learn about many projects and offer our suggestions. Committee members have been encouraged by the number of our suggestions that we have seen come to fruition, from handicap parking and drop-off points at the new Old Town Plaza to configurations in our city's growing trail network. This past year, we were offered the opportunity to join the city in recognizing global challenges that present special challenges for disabled persons. One of the highlights of our year is reviewing nominations for and choosing a recipient of the city's Above and Beyond Award, recognizing those who deserve recognition for efforts on accessibility issues. Valerie will be presenting this year's award and telling you about the recipient shortly. Proclamations by the council remain an effective means of highlighting the challenges facing our disabled residents. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council, for these. In closing, we all in your committee are looking forward to joining you and continuing the city's efforts for inclusion and respect for all its residents. In particular, we pleasure to continue our close work with your capital improvement, transportation, waste and recycling, and police departments this year. I also would like to personally thank Jim Ramsey, our staff member, you've provided for his help in developing our agendas monthly and other tasks. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Capps, for that wonderful report.
Thank you.
I know on behalf of the council, we want to thank all of you, all of our committee members, for all of the great work that you do in making sure that our residence and our community is not only safe, but that we are inclusive. And so, thank you again for your service. And thank you also to add in there the recognition for Karen as well.
Thank you.
That was very appropriate. Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues here? All right, we'll trans— yes, go ahead.
No, I want to thank you for all the work you do because are you looking to provide education, but also looking for ways to provide accessibility for all of our—for all the city structures and commercial structures. It's not an easy task to do when you have to make that assessment because for those who have the very visible disabilities along with the invisible disabilities, it's important that we're looking for ways to make accessibility, as well as entrance and exit from facilities, to make them as safe as possible. And so, I really thank you and the committee for the work that you are still doing and continuing to do for the city of Elk Grove. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Which is a perfect transition to Item 4.2, which is our proclamation declaring October 2023 as Disability Awareness Month. And presenting that will be our Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I do go on, I do want to dovetail a little bit more relative to accessibility. My father was a landscape architect for the city of Sacramento for 30 years. Along with that, accessibility was an extremely important part of parks and playgrounds. And throughout his career and his later life, he was very dedicated to ensuring that, you know, Americans with Disabilities Act was designed into all of the park systems that he participated in. And for folks who don't know, accessibility matters because if you cannot access things that other folks can, whether it's a playground structure or whether it's a restaurant, you are excluded. And it's not a good place to be and it doesn't feel good for folks. So accessibility matters. And so, with that, I'd like to read the proclamation, Disability Awareness Month, October 2023. Whereas in the month of October 23 has been designated as Disability Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize individuals with disabilities. And whereas no disability in any way diminishes the right of individuals to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience the economic, political, social, cultural, and education mainstream of American society. And whereas family members, friends, and members of the community can play a vital role in enhancing the lives of individuals with disabilities, especially when the family and community are provided with necessary support services, and the public and private employers are aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities to be engaged in competitive work and inclusive settings. And whereas the goals of the city include providing individuals with disabilities the opportunities and support to make informed choices and decisions, live in homes and communities where they can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, pursue meaningful and productive lives, contribute to their family, community, state, and nation, and achieve full inclusion in society. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims October 23 as Disability Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove and asks the community to join in honoring individuals with disabilities. Sign this day of October 23.
All right. So if you'll come down there. Okay, let's see. Next up is 4.3, Recognition of the City of Elk Grove Disability Advisory Committee's 17th Annual Above and Beyond Program Accessibility Award. And this is a presentation by members of our—there we go. Okay.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Val Shatra, a member of the Elk Grove Disability Advisory Committee, otherwise known as DAC. I'd like to introduce the other members of our DAC committee. Unfortunately, Ted Clark could not be here this evening, but we have Prus Cager, a member, Steve Capps, you've already met, also a member, Han Hennessy is also a member, and our staff liaison, Jim Ramsey. Tonight, we celebrate the city's 17th Annual Above and Beyond Accessibility Awards. The award was created to recognize individuals, organization, and businesses that have gone above and beyond for individuals with disabilities in our community. This award is important to the DAC and city because it recognizes Elk Grove's diverse community. The nomination application includes questions like, "Has a nominee provided services to Elk Grove's residents with disabilities within the past 12 months? Are the services free from discrimination? Does a nominee get paid for the services they provide? And what are the services? Why are they needed? And what is the benefit or impact on those receiving these services?" I would like to thank those who are nominated for this award, as they are all doing great work in our community. This year, the DAC will be handing out one award. The recipient of this year's award is Sierra Dugger. Sierra is a supervising recreation therapist with Consumnus Community Service District. In the year and a half since she's taken this role, the creation adventure program that she's created has grown exponentially. She has also created dozens of programs, dances, events, for those with disabilities. One event was the Rad Games, partnering with Special Olympics. Each participant completed the passports for each activity, then they walked down the finish line and received a medal. Sierra has also started to build our Bad Recreation Adventures program for kids. She's also held trainings for district staff on disability etiquette, partnered with Visions and Motions, Fly Brave, and the Speeze Foundation. And last year, she won for the Rad program by rowing in a giant pumpkin, the hollowed-out We want to thank Sierra not only for helping to provide programs and events for those with disabilities, but by going above and beyond and creating new programs and expanding opportunities for those with disabilities. We'd like to show Sierra our gratitude by presenting a plaque. And the plaque reads, "City of Elk Grove Above and Beyond Accessibility Award Honoring Sierra Dugger for Outstanding and Dedicated Service to Improving the Quality of Life for Individuals with Disabilities, Elk Grove, California, October 2023." Sierra is here with us, and we'd like to say a few words when it's appropriate.
All right, I appreciate it. Right. Where did all those pictures come from, man? Hi, everyone. Thank you for sharing about my journey with Rad. I appreciate it. But wow, what an honor. I want to thank the Disability Advisory Committee with the City of Elk Grove for this award. I also feel so grateful to Consumnus CSD and the team that I get to work with every day. Our program Rad, which stands for Recreation Adventures, is our adaptive and inclusive recreation program. Rad would not be what it is today without the support of our board members, senior leadership, our staff, our partners that we get to work with, as that was stated earlier, all the parents and Rad participants. It truly is a team effort. I appreciate the trust and freedom that CSD allows me to build Rad and its programs. I want to give a special shout-out to Yad, who's on the screen, who is my right-hand. Yad started as our intern this January and is now our Rad Site Director. She is also a certified recreation therapist and helps me with all of our classes, events, and accommodations across all of recreation. I was gonna share a little bit about Rad Games, but she did a great job sharing about our event, and we're excited to make it an annual event moving forward. Honestly, most days don't feel like work. I love what I do and the amazing participants that I get to work with. I feel blessed to work in a community such as Elk Grove that does such a great job supporting the disability community. I want to say thank you to everyone personally and professionally that has supported me and our Rad program. I'm eager to see our programs grow and provide more options for individuals with all abilities. Thank you.
Does the committee want to come up and take a photograph? Do we go up there?
Yeah.
Would you like us to join you? We're fine here, too.
But—so, Madam Mayor, while they're doing that, one thing I did want to do is I've had the opportunity to work with Sierra on several occasions in the past, and I gotta tell you what, CSD has one of the most—or has the best programs in the area for—oh, don't go away, you gotta stay there.
Yeah, we're gonna join you in a second.
I promise I'm gonna wrap it up here real quick, Sierra. You know me, I don't talk very long. But, you know, first of all, thank you very much to CSD for that. But Sierra, I've had the opportunity to work with you on a couple of—and I don't know that we've actually even personally ever met before, it's always been on the phone or on email.
No, but you helped sponsor, you know, Rad karaoke and our events.
Right. But—and specifically to that, I really appreciate it because you make it so easy, right? There are people from the community that would love to help in those instances, and you've made it so easy for them, and I really appreciate your dedication to the community for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. of Marley the Canine. Presenting that will be our requester of this recognition, Councilmember Darren Suen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Eisenbrandt, Mr. Mrs. Eisenbrandt here?
Are they here?
Oh, there they are. Yeah. All right, hi. Thanks for coming all the way over from Wilton. Well, this is a feel-good story, and I'm honored to make the request, but I gotta give a shout-out to—I think it was Marty Kingsbury who tagged me on Facebook when I saw this. And I saw the story and asked for this recognition, and it's so well-deserved. And any of you who've ever come home, and I have to, come home and found your pet missing, that moment where your heart stops beating and you're running around frantically and looking for that pet, and the relief that, you know, hopefully you find when you recover them. Everybody—a lot of people know that feeling. But this—in this particular case, additional shock and horror when your dog is attacked by two other dogs right in front of you, and badly injured, and runs off, and you can't find your pet. And these are—our furry friends are our family members. And so, seeing this story was especially heartbreaking, but seeing the happy ending thanks to Leon and Carol Eisenbrandt at Wilton Animal Rescue, getting Marley home—I know she's still recovering this in the long process, and thanks to Franklin Ranch Pet Hospital as well. But—and so, we're hoping she's back to normal very soon. But your community service in rescuing this family member, it deserves commendation, and so we really appreciate it, and we're happy to recognize you this evening. Thank you.
It's a pleasure to help the lost dogs get back home. We've done this for a while. We've actually used the police department, the sheriff's department, and they'll actually send out their drones to help us look for animals. We have courses available and people mounting up and come on out and help us find animals. So we're really glad that we can do that for the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing us.
You bet, yeah.
We're gonna come right there.
Say there, we're coming.
Are we all ready?
We have puppies at home. They're only three weeks with little eyes. You know, thank you so much. That's so nice.
Thank you. Thank Martin.
Oh, Marty?
Marta. Marty Kingsbury, yeah.
You're beautiful. Thank you.
Congratulations.
We sat together at the fire department crafty one year. There was only the three of us.
Appreciate your service.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Sorry. Not good at this.
Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. We're happy to present to you our new employees that have been hired over the last quarter, as well as those that have received promotions. We always enjoy coming and introducing you to them and to them, to the community. So we're gonna go ahead and start with our police department, Chief Davis.
I just don't wanna make Jason angry with me touching the mics. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, it is an honor. My name is Bobby Davis, obviously the police chief for the City of Elk Grove. It's my honor to introduce our new hire and promotions, and we have a line, as you can see. Sean C. is here? No? So I'm gonna read—even the ones that aren't here—we have a couple people who aren't here, but I'm gonna read them as well. I think it's important to acknowledge all of our folks that we've had an opportunity to hire. So dispatcher Sean C. Smith, July 3rd. She was hired 2023. Sean C. was born and raised in Sacramento. Prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department, she joined—she worked at the Safe Credit Union. While away from work, she enjoys spending time with her family and traveling. Next up is Officer Daniel Grauman, who works graveyard. Daniel was born and raised in Lodi. He served four years at the United States Marines and was deployed twice. Prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department, he worked for Stockton Police Department for approximately 18 years. While away from work, Dan enjoys golf and has been a caddy for several tournaments in the western region. CSO Abigail Costa, July 31, 2023. Abigail was born and raised in Sutter Creek. Prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department, she worked at Sutter Creek PD as a police cadet for approximately seven years. She also worked as a volunteer firefighter for the Sutter Creek Fire Department. While away from work, Abigail enjoys road trips and reading.
Welcome. Vanessa was born in Sacramento. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, she worked for an IT cybersecurity company for approximately two years. See, I saw you light up right there. While away from work, Vanessa enjoys playing golf. Welcome to our department. Dispatcher Kai Tharp. Kai was born and raised in Elk Grove. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Kai worked at Starbucks for approximately seven years. While away from work, she enjoys reading, painting, writing, composing music, swimming, and hiking. Welcome to our department. Yeah. ASO Makala Krenic, August 28th, 2023. Makala was born in Sacramento and lived in Hawaii until she was three years old, then moved to Lodi. Prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department, she worked for Sunset Kennels. While away from work, Makala enjoys working on vehicles, going fishing, hunting, and camping. Welcome to our department. Mental health clinician, Ms. Janae Schaller. Janae was born in Burbank and raised in Santa Clarita. She earned her degree in special education from Chico State and her master's degree in social work from CSU Long Beach. Janae also studied abroad in Ghana. While away from work, she works as a professional whitewater raft guide, and it is legit. Ah, yeah, welcome. CSO Ryan Perkins. Ryan was born and raised in Elk Grove. He's earned his degree in criminal justice from San Jose State University. While away from work, Ryan enjoys traveling and watching sports. Ryan was hired on September 11th, 2023. Welcome to the department. ASO Vicki Zane. Vicki was born and raised in Stockton. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Vicki worked at a small animal hospital for seven years. While away from work, she enjoys hiking, camping, and kayaking. Welcome. Officer Brandon Heron. Brandon was born in Oakland and raised in the Bay Area. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, he worked as an officer for Citrus Heights PD, Sutter County Sheriff's Office, and Yolo County Sheriff's Office. While away from work, Brandon enjoys spending time outdoors, snowboarding, going on motorcycle rides, and attending sporting events. Welcome to the PD. Officer Levi Swindell. Officer Levi Swindell. Levi was born in San Francisco. During his elementary school years, his family moved to Elk Grove. Prior to joining Elk Grove PD, Levi worked as an officer with LA, Los Angeles Airport Police for approximately nine years. While away from work, he enjoys working out, camping, horseback riding, playing football, and reading up on military history. Welcome to the PD. Officer Daniel Velardi, September 25, 2023. Daniel was born in Salinas and grew up in Greenfield. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, he worked as a police officer for Stockton Police Department for approximately 11 years. While away from work, Daniel enjoys attending sporting events and playing adult league softball. And Daniel is not here right now. Yes. Dispatch supervisor Shannon Hill. Shannon joined the Elk Grove Police Department. She's an OG, April 13, 2006. Prior to promoting, she served as a dispatcher on various shifts over the years. Shannon was promoted on July 16, 2023.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Sergeant Dustin Poore.
Come on.
Dustin joined Elk Grove Police Department, October 4, 2015. Prior to promoting, he served as a motor officer in our traffic unit, along with many other assignments. Currently, Dustin supervises swing shift and patrol. He was promoted on July 30, 2023. Lieutenant Greg Moore is, it's his birthday, and he is hunting, so he's not here, but I will read it. Lieutenant Greg Moore, he was promoted on July 30, 2023. Greg joined the Elk Grove Police Department, February 6, 2006. Prior to promoting, he served as a sergeant in our special operations unit. He currently is a watch commander assigned Sergeant Kenny Beck. Kenny joined the Elk Grove Police Department, February 6, 2006. Prior to promoting, he served as our special equipment operator. Currently, Kenny supervises the swing shift, and that smile that's on his face is always there. Welcome. Congratulations. Lieutenant Reggie Williams. Reggie joined the Elk Grove Police Department, 2000, I'm sorry, he asked, I'm sorry, yes. Reggie joined the Elk Grove Police Department, August 28, 2011. I may have mixed up on when he promoted. Prior to promoting, he served as a sergeant in our investigative unit. Currently, Reggie is a watch commander assigned to patrol, and he was promoted on August 27, Police records tech, Janae Carroll, who's not here, promoted on August 27, 2023. Janae joined the Elk Grove Police Department on April 28, 2019. Part of her new assignment is training new police records technicians. Sergeant Keith AJ Armstrong. Keith joined the Elk Grove Police Department, November 30, 2014. Prior to promoting, he served as a detective in our investigations unit. Currently, Keith supervises swing shift patrol. Congratulations, dude. Sergeant Scott Wessel. Scott Wessel promoted September 24, 2023. Scott joined the Elk Grove Police Department, June 23, 2019, and prior to promoting, he served as a pop officer in our Community Resources Bureau. Currently, Scott supervises night shift patrol. The joys of promoting, going to graveyard. Oh, here we go. One more first, sir, one more. Sergeant Christopher Kenny was promoted on September 24, 2023. Chris is not here. Chris joined the Elk Grove Police Department on January 25, 2015, and prior to promoting, he served as a detective in our investigative unit. Chris is currently assigned to swing shift patrol. Anthony Ortiz is our Elk Grove City and Police Department's newest community prosecutor. A pretty special role for us. I'm gonna read a little bit about Anthony, kinda talk a little about what he's meant to us already in the short period he's been here, and then Anthony would like to say a few things. So, Anthony was born and raised in Stockton. After leaving Stockton, he earned his bachelor's degree from San Jose State and law degree from George in Sacramento. Anthony has lived in Elk Grove for over 15 years. Anthony's been a prosecutor with the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office for almost 25 years. As a DDA, Anthony spent most of his career prosecuting homicide cases, but has also spent time in the domestic violence unit, major narcotics unit, and the gang unit. Before joining the Elk Grove Police Department as a community prosecutor, Anthony did two stints as a community prosecutor with the Sacramento Sheriff's Department in South Sacramento, and as a community prosecutor, Anthony assists Elk Grove Police Department in resolving issues in the community, assists with investigations, and personally handles cases that require special attention. He is an experienced prosecutor for over 20 years. He has a unique perspective for us because he began as a defense attorney, and it's become a significant value for us and for him when it comes to how he handles our cases, and the fact that he is sensitive in everything that he does and his approach with both sides. He has already assisted our Elk Grove Pop and Hot Unit with the implementation of the youth academy right here in the city of Elk Grove. He has assisted with our juvenile diversion program, assisted with the retail theft prevention program. He did a presentation for our volunteer academy. He has helped with multiple cases that may have been lost in the past because he's here in our organization and our city. He does mediation disputes between neighborhoods. He does, he's already attended multiple watch, neighborhood watch meetings, and one of the things that's really important for us that he has helped us with is the CORE program, and that's the District Attorney's Chronic Offender Rehabilitation Program, significant for the unhoused population and those folks in our community that need assistance. And he obviously has spent a lot of time with us in planning and partnering for reducing crime across our city. And one note, final note, and this was from the staff that you work with, the people that you've already spent time with and care about you already in our city, and this is what they said. "What I love most about Anthony is humility, his willingness to help and solve problems no matter the challenge. He's been a blast to work with, and is just an all-around great guy. He's made me and our officers and our community better already in just a few months." Anthony Ortiz.
Good evening. Most of you I've met before, but not all of you. Some I met in restaurants, some at local events, and some at National Night Out. But I thank you for this opportunity. As said, I've been a DEA for quite some time, so I've worked with all agencies in Sacramento County and some outside of Sacramento County, and the last two months, I've been extremely impressed with what Chief Davis and Assistant Chief Solomon have put together, or not once they put it together by themselves, but at least are heading this department. The morale here is so high. Every morning when I come to the office, greeted with smiles, and it's just a cool department to work for. It helps that the resources you have as well are there to assist with the law enforcement. Again, I thank you for this opportunity. Cool fun fact is, one of my first cases that I did a few months ago in Elk Grove involved a couple of very key witnesses from the city attorney's office, and with those great witnesses, we got a great verdict from our jury of guilty, and we were sentenced a local nuisance to prison for several years, the maximum term that was allowed by law. And it's those type of collaborations that I'm hoping to continue with. I think my feet are firm inside the department. I would like to spread out into the community a little more, so if there are some events or things going on in Elk Grove, please, I request, if you can extend an invite, I would love to attend those events with you, and that goes not only for the city council members, but community members as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
All right, thanks, Chief. Next, we have Luis Aguilar, who's filling in for Daryl Doan.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Luis Aguilar, Economic Development Manager. So, tonight I have the pleasure of introducing our newest team member, Sarah Rodriguez. Sarah was hired as an economic development specialist on August 28. She was born and raised in Santa Clara, California. Her family is from Portugal and Brazil. After high school, she moved to Long Beach to attend college where she double majored at California State University of Long Beach, and then after undergrad, she ran a cultural and educational nonprofit organization. She went back to school and got her master's degree in sociology from, at San Jose State University in 2018. She worked at various universities, including the Warren School of University of Pennsylvania's campus in San Francisco doing marketing and communication. So, in her spare time, she enjoys dancing, playing volleyball, and traveling and spending time with loved ones. So, welcome, Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. I'm pleased to announce three new hires in my department. I'm rarely up here, but I'm glad to be up here to announce these three hires. So, William DeScala, come up, William. So, William started with the city as a code enforcement officer on August 15. Prior to his arrival, he worked as a parking enforcement officer in the city of Sacramento for two and a half years. He grew up in Livermore, California, attending the University of Santa Cruz. Go Banana Slugs. All right. William and his wife Laura currently live in Lodi and have an eight-year-old son and a six-year-old daughter. In his spare time, he likes learning Taekwondo, renovating his house, gardening, and visiting craft breweries, and I'm certain in not in that order. All right. Currently is assisting his wife with the home baking business, which is rapidly growing, and the name is so true, Better With Butter.
Ah.
So true. So, welcome, William DeScala. Next up is Becky Jones.
Thank you, sir.
So, Becky Jones started with the city on September 11 as the city's first homeless services navigator. She worked over 10 years doing homeless outreach in some form or another. Her Elk Grove journey started March of 2020, which is the start of the pandemic, as her first navigation assignment with self-help housing, Sacramento self-help housing. So, in over three years here in Elk Grove, this is very impressive. Becky has been able to assist over 100 households, totaling over 250 individuals who lives were rescued from homelessness.
Wow.
I'm not done. In her personal time, she enjoys cooking. Her favorite is being a good smoked barbecue. Watch out, Chief. Throwing darts, watch out, you better watch out for me there. Spending time with her mom and watching football with her husband of more than 21 years. So, welcome, Becky Jones.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, everyone.
Last but very not least, Jose Mendez. So, Jose started the city on September 25 as the city's new code enforcement manager. Don't panic, Rosa Tapia is with me still as our new management analyst, so congratulations on that lateral move for her. Jose has worked in the code enforcement profession for 19 years. He started his career in the county of Sacramento where he assisted the implementation of the rental housing inspection program. His previous job was with code enforcement manager for the city of Sacramento, where he administered regulations on various industries, including entertainment, cannabis, tobacco, and more. He is an instructor of the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, CASIO, not to be confused with the watch, where he gets to share his experience and knowledge with upcoming code enforcement professionals. He holds a BA in organizational behavior and leadership, and he has an MBA, both from the University of San Francisco. Go Dons. All right. He grew up in the Bay Area and has been a resident of Sacramento since 2004. He has a 19-year-old son that he's extremely proud of, who studies at San Francisco State University. Go Gators. Right?
Yeah.
All right. Jose enjoys the outdoors in his spare time, including paddle boarding, hiking, kayaking. He volunteers at his local church with his fiance and aspires to start a nonprofit one day that will assist in providing financial literacy to young parents, and he also inspires to open a coffee shop and a bookstore. So, welcome to our family.
All right. Next, we have Sean Gallagher, Deputy Public Works Director, representing Jeff this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm happy to be here to introduce Public Works' new hires. First up is Samir Min. Samir is engineering technician one, working in our capital maintenance group and operations and maintenance. Samir will be joining and working on many of our pavement program projects that will be happening over the next few years. He will be doing everything from project development, scoping, inspection, and closeout. Samir graduated from Kasumnas Oaks High School, has a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering from Sac State, and loves to give back to the community any way he can, is very active, and enjoys working out and spending time outdoors. Next up is Permaveer Singh, who is engineering technician two. He is also in operations and maintenance, capital maintenance group. He similarly will be working on many of these capital maintenance projects, pavement, and drainage projects. Permaveer currently lives in Eldorado Hills and grew up in Sacramento. He is working on his bachelor's degree in civil engineering. Although he lives in Northern California, he is a huge Laker fan, which I like, and during his free time, plays basketball, spends time with his dogs, and he's looking forward to becoming a part of the city of Elk Grove and being able to give back to the community. Welcome. Next up, I believe many of you know Anne Brava.
Anne, yay.
Who is now officially a city employee as the real estate manager. As some of you know, Anne has been with us since 2014 as a consultant, originally as a real property agent, and then in 2020 as the consultant real estate manager. We are fortunate to have retained her historical knowledge, skill, and go-getter approach, and we are very happy to have her join the Elk Grove family. Anne's favorite holiday is Thanksgiving, as she enjoys making feast and spending it with family and friends. She also enjoys traveling, camping, hiking, and biking. Welcome.
Welcome, Anne.
Not here tonight is Oswe Ruiz, who is a maintenance technician one, who joined operations and maintenance's drainage group. Oswe was born and raised in the Stockton area. He worked previously for the city of Stockton Public Works. He's a big-time Green Bay Packers fan. He is incredibly driven, loves learning new things, and is looking forward to his time here with the city. Also not here tonight is Deshaun Ship, who is also a maintenance technician one in the operations and maintenance drainage group. Sean was born and raised in the Sacramento area, the youngest of three siblings. He attended Sacramento High School and previously was a commercial truck driver and also worked for PG&E. He is looking forward to his time here, as he has a daughter who attends Kasumnas Oaks High School, where she is a varsity cheerleader. Finally, is Whitney Yon.
I'm not for this.
Yes. No, no, I saved her for last. No. She was recently promoted to administrative analyst within Public Works' operations. Whitney started with the city's finance department in 2014 as a customer service specialist, and then as an administrative assistant. In 2020, I had the pleasure of hiring her as my senior administrative assistant, where she really did help keep me organized more than anything else. Her new role, she will be providing my team with analytical and budgetary support, as well as assisting our capital maintenance projects. Whitney holds a bachelor's degree in economics and enjoys working for the city. In her spare time, she likes hiking and paddle boarding.
That concludes everything.
All right, that concludes our new hires and promotions. So, for our new hires, welcome to the Elk Grove family, and for those that were promoted, congratulations on your promotions.
Yeah.
So, with that, we will move on to our public comments, and we have two people signed up on public comment. Items not on the agenda. I will open up the public comment opportunity. First up is Jamal Nayer.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor. I wanted to address the problem we have on my straight eye. I wanted to address the problem we have on my street. I purchased my home in 1989, after returning from the Air Force, and I've been there all this time and never had any problems with any problems as far as parking or anything until about a few years ago. And now, in fact, I addressed you on March 14th in an email concerning this problem we had here with one individual, one occupant across the street from me, who brings as many as 10 to 12 vehicles on our street, many of which don't have, they're either expired plates, or he's got vehicles that'll line up in his driveway that don't even have any plates. And also, there's a noise factor. I'm 100% disabled vet. I have a hard time sleeping, and he's driving me nuts. So that's what I addressed to you on March 14th. You replied back to me, and you said you were going to send the staff out, and we're still having problems. Or even my next-door neighbor, so I'm speaking on his behalf also.
Thank you, sir. This might be something good for our community prosecutor to help.
Yes, ma'am. Assistant Chief Solomon will speak with him.
Okay, sir, did you hear that? Okay. Our next speaker is Kathleen Collins.
Good evening. On the same area here, we're having an issue with drugs in Old Town. I came four weeks ago, five weeks ago, to City Hall. I shook the manager of the department's hand. I've left a message for the councilman, and we still haven't had any action. And when someone calls and says it's causing medical difficulties, and I did list the list, including the elderly and children, would you please take some action? Because it's been going on for two and a half months. We had the same problem last year, and we did not have any action. But this year, it is really causing painful difficulties. So whatever you need, chief, your staff sergeant has the address. Would you please do something? I think you know what I'm talking about. I also walked across the street, if I may bring this to the personnel manager's attention, and asked for some help. How do we handle this issue at the police counter? I was told to go home and call. And I said, well, why would I do that? I'm here. Because if the phone rings and we're helping you, we can't answer the telephone? Now, I worked for years in major government agencies and had responsibilities for a public counter, press news, plus everything else everyone does. So maybe that needs to be addressed. I can think of many issues where someone would come and need help, but because telephones record and people know how to check, you might need to do it in person. But with someone-on-one, our taxes pay for services, and when you need some suggestions on how to approach diplomatically and such, you need to talk to whom I used to call the desk sergeant, somebody with some experience. And this call and leave message and changing around, the city needs to look at that approach as far as timeliness and serving the public. It takes so long to play that, and it's really not the best. But when I walked in, I really expected, even if it's a form, but I did need the one-on-one. I don't know what the problem or issue is, but it does need to be addressed. And I thank you. Could someone please help us over there in Old Town? Madam Mayor?
Please send me an email, and I will start the line. I'll check in with our chief and others. So if you want to contact me directly, at least I have a way to reach out to you.
Well, for privacy reasons, we'll just handle it this way.
And by the way, and by the way, please, please give me a call.
Oh, Mr. Brewer, how kind of you.
Yeah, no, definitely give me a call, so we can really talk and really look at what's going on in Old Town, because as much as I frequent Old Town, I want to see exactly where the cracks and crevices are, so we can help PD to address these issues.
When I remember certain laws we voted on as a state, there is a clause in there that says unless it affects others, affects, affects others, it gave the neighborhood some kind of mitigation and reason. So thank you very much for getting to the bottom of it quickly and permanently.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. That is our final speaker for public comment. So we will, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and move on to item number six, our city manager's report.
Good evening again. Happy to report on a few items. First of all, we have an open house for our enhanced winter sanctuary that'll be opening on November 1st, but the open house is coming up tomorrow at the location, which is 9260 Elk Grove Boulevard, former Rite Aid site, future site of library, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. The representatives from the city, as well as the gathering, will be there to share exactly what's happening there. People can ask questions and get a feel for how that is going to be operated. We had some informational sessions last week. That was a great opportunity to connect with the operator, gathering in, lots of good feedback and questions. And so just as another opportunity to get that information prior to opening on November 1st. Tomorrow night also will be the last neighborhood good market of the season at District 56 from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, so come on out and shop local with your friends. Explore Elk Grove, and Elk Grove Police Department will host the Hollapalooza and Trunk or Treat event this Friday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at District 56. It's a free family event, feature costume contests, activities, save trunk or treating, just a great time. So encourage everybody to come on out, bring the kids, and have a great time. Learn and celebrate Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead, with Artners at a free family event this Sunday, October 29th, from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM at District 56. It's indoor and outdoor event, feature community altar building, painting, murals, music, and artisan displays. Event is sponsored by the city and the Elk Grove Arts Commission. City wants to make it easier to navigate Elk Grove's walking and biking trails. A new online survey is now open, and residents are encouraged to share how they use the trails, the navigation tools they prefer, any challenges they've experienced, and ideas for improvement. The feedback will be used to create an updated signage standard for the trails. Look for the link for the survey on the city's Facebook and Instagram pages. Finally, for the last several months, members of the zoo project team have been hard at work developing plans, drawings, and crunching numbers to see if a new zoo in Elk Grove might be possible. There is a presentation later tonight to go over those details. Staff will also share the newest designs and latest updates at a community open house scheduled for next Saturday, November 4th, at the Mewoc Village Elementary School, which is 10070 Lucida Drive, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Details about this event and the project are available on the city's website, and that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right, excellent report. Any questions? All right, seeing none, thank you, sir. Next up is our consent calendar items. I will open up the public comment opportunity. No one signed up for anything on consent. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That Councilmember Brewer is not here right now. All right, let's see. Next up is item 8.1.
That's a public hearing to consider capital improvement program design review for the Elk Grove Library relocation project.
Item for you this evening. As Jason mentioned, this is a request for a capital improvement program design review and CEQA exemption that would allow for the remodel of the existing building, about 18,000 square feet into the new home of the Elk Grove Library. We've talked about this a little bit over the years, but this will be the culmination of the process, or almost the culmination of the process before we go to construction. Little bit of background first, as you're aware, library services in the city and throughout Sacramento County are provided by our partner agency, the Sacramento Public Library Authority. I will note their executive director, Peter, is here this evening and available to answer questions on SPL operations if you have them. There are two existing branches in Elk Grove for library services, the first being the Elk Grove branch, which currently is located in Old Town. The second is the Franklin branch, which is co-located with Franklin High School over on the west side of town. In 2006, the Elk Grove Library was relocated to its current location at 8900 Elk Grove Boulevard, the corner at Elk Grove Forum. In 2018, the city completed, in partnership with SPL, a library and cultural arts center study, which identified the need for future and expanded library services throughout the community. The recommendations out of that report were, first, the creation of a new destination library at the District 56 campus, which is a long-term objective of the city; two, the relocation of the Elk Grove branch to a larger facility to accommodate needs at that location from square footage, operation, and parking, among other things; and then finally, a repurposing of the Franklin branch location, which is a future project. The city acquired the site at 9260 Elk Grove Boulevard in 2021 for the relocation of the Elk Grove Library. Little bit of background on this site, it does have some history to it. In 2007, the council, on an appeal of a planning commission denial, approved the design for this building. This was a contentious project at the time, had a lot of community concern and opposition to the design aspects and operation of the facility. Planning commission initially denied the project, and the council remanded it back to the applicant to continue working on the design, and what you see today is the culmination of that effort. The construction started in 2009, Rite Aid occupied it soon after. Ultimately, though, the site was listed for sale by the owners in 2018, which was a family partnership trust. And in 2019, separate and apart from that, Rite Aid ceased operations at the facility. So it became an opportune time for the city to look at this, as it would meet the needs outlined in the study from 2018. So you can see some imagery of what the existing building looks like, both on the exterior and interior. And again, the city manager mentioned the open house that's occurring tomorrow for the winter sanctuary project, another great opportunity for folks to see the current state of the building on the inside, if you haven't been in there since Rite Aid closed. So tonight, staff seeking approvals, first for a CIP design review for the project. Normally, for a project like this in Old Town, it would be subject to the development services director approval, because the majority of the improvements to it are interior of the building and flatwork exterior. There are no major modifications to the exterior of the building. However, our citywide zoning code does have certain particular approval procedures for projects that are directly funded through city funds like this. So in this case, it's the appropriate purview of the city council to consider this project. In terms of the allowance of a library at the site, certainly the existing library is within the Old Town special planning area and of consideration there, while not specifically listed in the commercial cultural description in the SPA, the development services director has approved a similar use determination for a library being allowed by right in this zone. A lot is happening in the building to make it work. As many people often say, you want to find a building with good bones and make it work for what your objectives are. This is very much the case here. We have a good project, a good opportunity site with the building, but a lot needs to happen in order to bring it online as a library. We'll look at more at the display or the graphics that illustrate this. So here you can see the overall site plan. I'll highlight a few of the things that we're looking at doing as part of the approvals tonight and the ultimate construction. First off, there'll be some rehabbing of the parking lot itself, while generally in good condition. There's a number of EV charging stalls and expansion for EV charging that would be part of the project. We'll also be pulling out two or three of the parking stalls to create a new pre-function patio space out in front of the community room. We'll be adding some additional bike racks, a flagpole, and then additional plaza space as part of the children's library area. This will be a fenced-in area. We'll see some examples of that in a moment. There's also a library of things component. This will essentially be like a tough shed-style building that'll be at the back of the site, where people can come and check out materials that are not part of the interior collection of the building. Libraries are more than just books and tapes and things now. There's a lot of other pieces to the collection, things like lawn mowers or power tools, whole variety of things, and Mr. Coyle can talk about that more if you have questions. So this creates a space for the storage of those things that's not part of the interior of the building, because the nature of those devices is a bit different. There's some rehab in the back of the building, creating a dedicated parking space for the bookmobile. This will become a branch location where the bookmobile will be staged in the South Sacramento area, and then servicing out into the delta and other areas of SPL service territory. And then finally, some outdoor break areas for staff will be created. Zooming in a little bit on that pre-function space, I want to highlight a few things here in addition to just improving the paving, creating more of a formal space, trying to make it more warm and inviting. So there'll be some string lights, they'll be part of that, some seat wall elements, landscape improvements. And then neat feature that'll be part of this in one of the early deployments across the SPL system is a book reservation after-hours hold pickup location. So sort of things like an Amazon locker or many other retail locations where you can order your materials, they're sitting in a locker, you can stop by at any time and pick them up. Same sort of idea here. This would be part of that pre-function space, and then there'll be a metal canopy structure protecting it from the elements for folks to be able to come up and interact with it. Little bit of zoom in in terms of the improvements along the Waterman Road frontage, again, the staff outdoor break area at the back corner of the building and some dedicated staff entrance space there. And then at the other corner, up at Elk Grove Boulevard, creating a plaza or patio space as part of the children's area. This would include a six-foot steel fence with some decorative elements to it to help secure it and enclose it from the street condition. The entrance for this will be through the building, this gate that's shown us for emergency egress only. Here's a little bit of the palette that would be part of the project. We're still refining a few of these elements, but they'll all be worked out before the project goes to bid. We'll be maintaining a lot of the brick improvements across the site. Here you can see an example, though not of the same height, of what that decorative fencing around the children's area could be, and some of the types of furniture that could be included in there. Out in front of the meeting room space, the seating opportunities, light fixtures, and then there'll be general landscape improvements across the site, refreshing it and making it more warm and attractive as well. And then some other examples of the outdoor furniture for the staff space, as well as for the library of things. It won't look exactly like this, but may certainly be a mural opportunity in the future. In terms of exterior improvements to the building itself, the building features a number of existing windows, as well as display cabinet spaces that act like windows or take the place of windows. We're being strategic about opening some of those up and adding windows to the building or converting those into doorways or entry spaces to get in and out of the building more than what Rite Aid would have had. We're doing this in a way to maintain the structural integrity of the building and not create a whole bunch of additional structural work to it as part of these improvements, trying to be very cost-conscious as we're doing that. The building overall, though, will get a repaint as part of this. You can see the color scheme up on the screen. Additionally, there's a shed roof along a couple of the frontages along Elk Grove Boulevard and the parking lot. Those were part of the architectural design and certainly something to keep, but the roofing material that was selected there as part of the project is not holding up as well as we'd like it to, given the vegetation, the oak trees, and what's dropping out of the trees just naturally. So as part of the project, that'll be converted over to a standing seam metal roof, similar color to mimic what's out there today and maintain the overall architectural integrity of the building. The interior improvements, again, you've seen this before when we shared it about a year or two ago. The entry will be maintained up at the corner of the building. You'll come in past the checkout desk into the main marketplace area, where there'll be a series of collection spaces and seating opportunities. Teen collection will get a dedicated space near the front, children's behind it, separated by a series of group study rooms or collaboration zone rooms. The children's area features that exit out to the children's patio, as well as a dedicated family restroom in the space. Jumping to the other side of that wall, there's a passport office, or potential for a passport office. That's a service line that SPL is not currently offering, but may in the future. Otherwise, this would be another group study room. And behind that, a workroom for the friends of the library and the work that they do in support of SPL's operation. Adjacent is the general adult collection, and then further back in the corner are the staff office spaces. The balance of the room includes the meeting room and storage space for it, as well as an incubator lab space for folks to come in and practice making materials, opportunity to utilize things like 3D printers, other sort of community gathering space as part of that. All of that with the meeting room, the incubator space, and the adjoining restrooms and janitorial closets are all ability to close off and separate after-hours, so those spaces can be utilized by the public on a reservation basis and still maintain the lockdown of the rest of the facility after hours. And then finally, there's additional staff space up at the front, so you'll have your book drop, whether exterior of the building or interior of the building, dropping materials right into the automated material handler for sorting, and then return that collection back out to the floor. Staff's recommendation and that of your planning commission is to find the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to the state CEQA guidelines and approving the CIP design review for the project, subject to the findings and conditions contained in your packet this evening. Finally, from a schedule perspective, I'll note we are working through now finalizing the construction documents. That'll take us a few more months to get through as we go through the last of the material choices, interior and exterior of the project. Our goal is to get that ready for bid early summer, the June-July timeframe. You'll see that construction contract back to you by the end of summer, and then we'll start on that construction next fall with the goal of opening it late 2025. If you have any additional questions about it, myself or Public Works staff are available and happy to answer those questions.
All right. Thank you for that excellent report, Mr. Jordan. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing and the public comment opportunity. We do have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Lindsay, Paul Lindsay.
Good to see you, Paul.
Good to see you guys, too. But I always answer that with good to be
But I always answer that with good to be seen.
Good to be.
So good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. As you know, my name is Paul Lindsay. I'm a longtime resident of Elk Grove, but tonight I'm speaking as my role as president of the Friends of the Library. I'd like to start by recapping city's announcement that the Rite Aid Building, future home of the Elk Grove Library, will be used as a temporary enhanced winter homeless shelter from November through March. Friends feel that this is a creative, humane, and positive development. I've said that to some of the staff in the city, first time I've said it publicly to everyone. You know, it's a way to help the unhoused through a difficult period of the year, and we applaud the city for taking that step. However, our focus tonight should be and is what happens after the temporary period ends and how the continuing development of our new library ensues. Plans put before you, quite eloquently by Mr. Jordan, tonight are the result of the combined efforts of the Sacramento Public Library System and the City of Elk Grove to provide a vital and necessary service to the community. The new site will offer a host of exciting and new assets to the community, as can be seen in the staff report. Happy to say that both SPL, the Public Library System, Sacramento, and the city have worked cooperatively and have sought out the opinions of the community, as well as the recommendations of the Friends of the Elk Grove Library. We wholeheartedly endorse this effort. I urge your support and affirmative vote this evening. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. All right. I do not have any other speakers on this item.
Madam Mayor, before you close, we do have Director Peter Coyle from Sacramento Public Library is in the audience. I wanted to offer him an opportunity if you had something you wanted to say, or I appreciate you being down here this evening, so if you had something you wanted to add.
And also want to give a special hello to Jared Keller as well, who's hiding in the mist.
Everybody's here tonight.
Yeah, this is good.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Spies. We are happy to be working with the City of Elk Grove on this project. The staff have been very collaborative, and we're really looking forward to the approval of this project. It'll be a great addition to Elk Grove, and we're really happy to move forward with this. So happy for your support and happy to answer any questions you might have, but looking forward to getting this program started, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out.
Thanks for being down here. We appreciate it.
All right. Now I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. And any questions? I'll start to the right, questions or comments? Councilmember Robles?
No questions, just happy this is going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
I just have one quick question, Madam Mayor. As far as like timetables, and thank you for giving the report, Mr. Jordan, but are we on pace to having everything rolling based on the timeline you shared? Or is it going to be a little bit of leeway between April 1st and July, or June or July, whenever we start the construction or the deconstruction of the internal remnants of the Rite Aid to transform it into the actual library?
At this point, we believe the schedules are lining up well. It's likely the project will be bid-ready, probably May, more likely June at this point. So there is a little bit of a gap there, and what that makes it as an opportunity for is any sort of pre-bid site walk. We can offer that to prospective contractors, and then we're not sort of doubling up the occupancy at that point. So at this point in time, we're not seeing any sort of conflict or issue there. As much as we would like to move the construction design faster, I don't know that we'll get there, but I'll defer to my Public Works colleagues on that. She's shaking her head, we're good, so.
Good. And also, because I know one of the things that people are looking for, have asked me about as well, security cameras inside the facility and outside the facility in the parking lot as well. Has that become or has surfaced as a consideration as we build out? Because obviously, with it being open to the public and such a large footprint that we'll have with parking lot and storefront as well, has that been a topic of discussion amongst your division and Public Works as well?
It absolutely has been a topic. In fact, I believe there's a condition that speaks to the security camera issue in a couple of venues. I don't remember the number off the top of my head. Generally speaking, there'll be a set of security cameras that are operated, and the footage is the property of SPL as the tenants for the building. I'll defer to Peter and team in terms of how they operate that, but there's certain sort of protocols and reasons why they need to maintain that as from a library perspective. We are working out with them what it means from a public safety angle relative to our real-time information center and other sort of security needs, whether that's simply we have exterior views, or if there's some incident, how do we be able to dial into the system? Those are details we're continuing to work out, but we're working collaboratively on that.
Great. No, this is a great project, and I'm very happy to see that everything's moving forward. So when the time is right, I'd be more than happy to move the staff recommendations.
All right. We have a motion and waiting there. I will go to Councilmember Derrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Just happy to see this moving forward. It's been a long time coming. Just looking at these treatments again here, I think this facility can be a jewel in that corner, and so very excited for it. Happy to second Councilmember Brewer's motion.
Excellent. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm excited to see this come. This is a fantastic thing. I'm really glad that there will be more library services further out to the east. I do have one question, and it's actually a bit left field. So Public Works, hang on to your hat here for a quick second. In speaking with management of Rite Aid prior to them vacating, that fountain at the front was a challenge. What is the plan for that fountain? Are you going to have it removed? Are you going to have it rehabilitated? But I know that it was kind of a sore subject relative to keeping that thing operating well.
The plan right now is the fountain will be removed. We are looking at opportunities for repurposing that space for public art. I didn't mention in the staff report, but one of the requested actions as part of the resolution is setting the public art budget for the project pursuant to our standards. We are currently working, or will be working in the coming months, with the Arts Commission on the arts plan. So you'll see the procurement of that at a certain appropriate time later on, but that is a candidate location for some sort of exterior artwork for the site.
Great. Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep, I echo the same comments. I'm very excited to see this move forward. It's an excellent civic amenity, not only for our city, but for the region, that will draw many, many people to enjoy this. So thank you for that presentation. I do have a motion and a second already on the table. So everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Let's see, next item, 9.1.
And thanks again, Director Coyle, for being down here this evening. It's a long evening, long drive. I'll see you tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Kaylee Lyons, Senior Transportation Planner. Excited to be here to provide a brief update on a project that we just completed, which is an educational bike safety campaign for young riders. In 2022, we applied for and received a grant to develop a bicycle safety guidebook targeting our third and fourth grade students. And the goal was really to reach students and their families in multiple languages with educational material that would improve their bike safety skills based on the types of behaviors that we were seeing around town. And there were several bicycle safety resources available at the time, but we really wanted something that was specific to Elk Grove and that would teach the type of safety skills that would help young riders on the facilities that they see here in town. So a little bit about the content. The title of the guidebook is Cycle Quest, the Safe Biking Adventure Book. I hope that's really exciting for young riders. And it includes information about riding on our trails, how to cross safely at intersections, helmet fit, how to check your bike before you head out on a ride, and other topics like that. And staff also created some local videos about trail etiquette, and then how to cross using rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which are signals that we have at several of our trail crossings. And the book also shows Elk Grove landmarks and includes our trails map at the end as well. The book is really designed to be interactive, so it has a lot of different activities. There's a bingo card, a way to map your route to school, a lot of different drawing and sort of matching knowledge skills together. It includes a certificate of completion, and then there's a pre-post knowledge quiz to help assess its impact on providing education. And then there are also call-out boxes that you'll see throughout the book for adults that focus on safe driving and how to ride safely with children. We have made the book available in addition to English and Spanish, Cantonese, and Vietnamese, and these languages were based on working with the school districts and the families that they work with there. We also have an interactive online website shown here, elkgrovecity.org/cyclequest, for those that don't receive a print copy. And there's activities that you can go in and do online as well. So we just started distributing the books. We've gone to two events so far, and will continue over the next year to attend city and community events. And then we're partnering with the school district to distribute them this school year to third-grade classrooms, to a select set of them. And then we have bookmarks that have QR codes for the website for the third graders that don't receive the print copies. We'll keep some at City Hall. Right now, they're stacked next to my desk waiting to be distributed, and we'll be handing them out around town at various activities. So as we were wrapping up this project at the end of last month, the Office of Traffic Safety invited us to apply for additional funds to conduct more activities related to bike safety. So we submitted another grant application last week, and I'm talking to OTS now about those activities. The next phase will expand safety education by developing a lesson plan for educators focused around the guidebook. It will include bike rodeos at some of our local elementary schools, and then we'll be able to purchase some safety items. So we'll have helmets for students that don't have them, reflective stickers to increase visibility, and bike lights as well, which are especially important as we're heading into winter and the sun sets early these days. So we're really excited to continue promoting safe biking through a variety of avenues. And as we get through winter and into spring, we'll also have some adult education and social rides and things, especially around May's Bike Month. So look forward to getting involved in that as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. I want to thank staff for writing the grant and reaching out to the third and fourth graders and collaborating with the school district. I think this is a really important program, but I'd like to make a couple suggestions. I think we need something for our drivers that are in their automobiles and pay absolutely no attention to the bike riders, because as safe as we can make the riders, we need to make our drivers safer. So I've had students that are young people riding on the sidewalk when they're riding their bike, and they'll apologize to me as I'm walking. But I tell them I'm glad that they're on the sidewalk, because it's the safest place that they can be. I don't want to see our young people riding in the streets, because the little white lines and the green pavement is not much protection for those distracted drivers I've seen a number of times. So if we can coordinate and get an adult program for the adults in their cars to be safer when they're driving, to watch out for our young people, I think then we'll have a real win-win for everyone and not just the students. The other thing I'd suggest is oftentimes I'll see parents riding with their children, and the children have helmets on and the parents don't. Well, I think as parents, we ought to model the behavior we want for our young people. So if there's another way that we can encourage parents, maybe in the helmet purchasing that the city does, maybe they can buy some parents some helmets. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our one and only speaker for this item. So I will close the public comment opportunity. Council comments, questions? We'll start with Councilmember Sun.
Not much comments, Mayor. Just I'm glad to see this program as well, for the safety of the kids.
Great. Vice Mayor?
I appreciate the grants, and I appreciate the effort that you have in terms of getting it out to more than just one language. I appreciate that. We need to make sure that all of the children across the city are safe in that. And so thank you very much for your presentation today, and I look forward to the bike rodeos and good fun like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
All great efforts.
All great efforts, and the grant funding is huge. And as long as we're still talking about safety for our young bike riders, that's definitely the coin of the realm. But I also appreciate what Lynn Wheat had just said, and Ms. Wheat raised some very good points, because earlier, three times this week, I've noticed as I'm driving down Elk Grove Boulevard, Elk Grove Florin, or any place where we have the bicycle zones, there have been some inconsiderate drivers that put some of our young riders and adult riders at risk. And so all these are good things, but we got to keep moving forward and doing what we can to help promote bike safety throughout the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles?
Thank you for the presentation, and the booklet looks really cool. So I know kids are going to be grabbing that, and like Vice Mayor Spies said, it's unique when you have different languages. So thank you for the hard work and the time that you've put into this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm glad that we partnered with our school district. Did we help select the schools, or did they?
We will be, we're in discussions right now to select the schools, so we're trying to set up some parameters, but we haven't made that decision yet, so it'll be a partnership.
So I would suggest the highest needs students and sort of our Title I schools, because that's where the need is greatest and where parents perhaps may not have the computer or printer to download the booklet. So making sure that those students that have the greatest needs get them first. That would be great. But great program, great to see this. So that's an non-action item. So I think I gave you some direction on just the outreach effort, so thank you for that. We will go ahead and move on to item 9.2.
And that's to receive an update on the status of the new zoo in Elk Grove Project. Evening again. If you could just a moment, I had a small change in the slide deck. So we have an update for you tonight on the progress on the design work and packaging up of the proposed zoo project. We'll go through those in a moment, but for full and complete clarity, there's no direction or action being seeked from you tonight on this. It's really just an update on the progress we've made. It's probably been about a year since we had any big information to share on the effort, so I thought it was time to bring stuff back. And luckily, we're at a good spot in the design work around this. I do want to take a moment to recognize that Jason Jacobs, the Executive Director of the Sacramento Zoological Society, and Liz, the Board Chair, are both here and here to answer any questions and lend support if you have the need. So the presentation tonight, I'll run back through the history and context of the project, and then we'll get into that design work. Everybody loves to see the pretty pictures, and we have a lot of them to share tonight. And then we'll talk about some next steps that are coming up as recent as a week from Saturday. So as you're aware, the current Sacramento Zoo opened in 1927 on a little over four acres in the Land Park area of Sacramento. Today, the zoo cover is just under 15 acres, includes about 400 animals, about 100 species across that campus, including the latest addition of the white rhino, Jay Gregory. In '97, the operations were moved from the City of Sacramento into a nonprofit organization, the Sacramento Zoological Society, who operated under accreditation from the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. The constrained site size has been an issue over the years. Expansion has been studied in a number of different ways. The collection has had to be modified extensively as new standards come up for animals and how they're housed in the various enclosure areas. City of Sacramento has looked at this a number of different ways, and as you're aware, in the summer of '21, the society approached Elk Grove to talk about opportunities that may exist in the city for this project to look at as a relocation. may exist in the city for this project, to look at as a relocation. In September of '21, we entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement, or ENA, with the society to begin this exploration. And in February of '22, we acquired a property as a candidate opportunity site for the development. We'll talk about that location in a moment. And then in March of '22, you saw the feasibility study, which outlined the potential opportunities and potential costs around development of a Phase One complex for the zoo. You directed us that time to continue with this relationship and start bringing together what the project elements would be and figuring out the details around the financing and construction process for the zoo, and that was memorialized in a memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding between the city and the society that laid out the conceptual design and schematic design work, the preparation of the impactful impact reports, and the preparation of the financing plan. The site that the city acquired in parallel with the project is shown here. It's along Camera Road on the north side, just a stone's throw from State Route 99 and the casino. It butts Blot's Parkway on its eastern edge and undeveloped property on the west side. It's about a little over 100 acres in total. So since the MOU was entered into in 2022, we have gone through the conceptual design work and done some public outreach in that summer of '22. You'll recall we did a barbecue event with the neighbors immediately next door in the Sterling Meadows neighborhood to get feedback and interest from them and some design ideas. We did an event at the Fourth of July event that year, a couple of other community engagement opportunities. We had an open house in August of '22 in order to present what our initial round of work had been, get some additional feedback from the community. And then in November of '22, the conceptual design work with the site plan and some renderings was released out as part of a zoo event at District 56. Since then, we've been working extensively with the design team, our engineering team, to put together the schematic plans that we have for you tonight. A lot's gone on in consideration of what could be or not be as part of this complex. I won't go through all of this, but obviously there's a lot of must-haves to think about and start planning for around this facility, things that are potentially nice to have. Some of those really have dialed into the must-have column at this point. And then a few things that absolutely not, that from an operation standpoint, a cost perspective, or just aligning it with what the objective of the zoo project is, there just really isn't an opportunity there. So this is what you last saw in October of '22, the build-out plan for the campus, around 63, 65 acres or so in total, with various parking facilities, Ring Road, and a whole bunch of elements to it. So it includes the Africa complex, sort of on the western half side of it. For orientation, this is everything's turned 90 degrees, so north is actually on the right-hand side of this graphic. Lots Parkway is at the bottom of the graphic. Camera is just off-screen to your left. And so we laid out this, this program, this concept with a fair amount of detail, but actually still pretty, very high level, actually. There's a lot of detail that's missing from this, and that's what we've been working on this year. You also saw these graphics, or many graphics like this, that showed from an artistic rendering perspective what those habitats might look like and the guest experiences and interactions with the collection. But we have done a lot since then. This is that updated site plan from a schematic design perspective. It may look like at this level that there's really just a lot more call-outs on here, but believe me, there is a lot more detail, and that's what the next series of slides are going to talk about. This still remains a 60, 65-acre campus in total, just within the fence line. This is a massive project, a massive undertaking. There is no way this is all going to get built in Phase One. So we are looking at the phasing program around this. The initial thinking right now is the core facility, the core elements of this, and we'll talk about those in a moment, are what we're calling Phase 1A and 1B. The distinction are there are some elements in that early phase that maybe don't quite meet the budget line item that we'd like to in terms of the donations we're able to get from the community, the overall budget availability in terms of the city partnership and other funding partners around the project. So there's adults that we'd be looking for. These are items that could easily be added in over time as part of a successive phase, or successor phase immediately after. Phase 1C then completes the Africa component by adding in hippo, additional rhino area, and we'll see those in a moment, as well as an opportunity for African ape. Phase 2 would be the California piece, is one we've been very excited about throughout this design process. Phase 3 would actually relocate some modular office space for staff from the back of the complex up to the front by the main entry. And then Phase 4 would be the Australasia phase. So we've done a little bit of movement and piecemealing of things around to try to come up with a site plan that's well-massaged and try to really dial in that first phase. We're sitting at, I think, at about 28 acres right now for the first-phase project as outlined here, which really is nearly a doubling of the current campus size and a great opportunity. So here is that Phase 1A, 1B component. I think the next slide's, yeah, we'll just start diving into it. So we're going to break this up into four individual screens. We'll work through it in a clockwise fashion around the site. So first you have out here the parking fields. We're actually breaking the parking lot up in the design into two fields. There'll be the north parking lot. It's immediately adjacent to the entrance. It'll just have shy of 600 parking stalls. By our team's math, that will cover about 75% of the days of operation across the calendar year that the zoo will need for parking facilities. Of course, this is a drastic improvement from the Land Park circumstance, where those facilities are all onsite into the neighborhood and shared with all the other operations that occur out in Land Park. There's also a south parking lot across Classical Way from the complex that'll be needed for the other 25% of the days. These are essentially your Friday, Saturday, Sunday, holiday days in the spring and fall. When the weather's great, everybody wants to get outdoors and have that family engagement opportunity. So you'll come through the parking lots, you'll come into the entry complex, where you'll have guest services, restroom facilities. You'll come into the arrivals plazas, your ticket is received, and then you'll have some great views looking out over the east savanna, where there'll be giraffe, and we'll see some examples of what this may look like in a moment with the way our design's working out. As we go up and outside the gates a little ways, you get to the restaurant. You'll recall we're designing the site with two restaurant elements. The first, and we'll see in a little bit, is the traditional restaurant you'd have in a zoo or a facility like this. You can get the kids some chicken nuggets or a hot dog, have a pretty standard fare meal, which is great, but an opportunity for a little more upscale dining experience, and really an opportunity that you could go to this restaurant with a ticket to the zoo for the day, or if you don't have a ticket, still be able to go and experience the restaurant and experience the atmosphere of the zoo and see part of the collection as part of your visit. So that's what we're calling right now the Giraffe Lodge. So there's a restaurant piece here with that entry directly from the parking lot, as well as from inside the zoo itself. So again, you can have that ticket experience. And then you'll come out here onto the games lawn and outdoor patio seating with these great views out over the west savanna side. Adjacent to that is the kitchen for the restaurant piece and all the backup house operations for customer service in terms of the sales of your stuffed animals and your pencils and all the other stuff that'll happen in the retail space up at the main gate, as well as an event dining area. This in Phase 1B could be a covered pavilion, much like we have over the Old Town Plaza, but in Phase 1A, this will probably be more likely just a big patio space where we can set up tables and chairs, pop-up tent if we need to. But again, it has those views out over the savanna as well. Moving around the site, we get into some of the care quarters for giraffe and the hoof stock that'll be out on those savannas with the dedicated pathways for them to get out there through the gates. What you'll see in these red lines are all of the grading work. We're starting to lay out the grading plan, which is really key to setting those vistas, how you experience that, the topography and that enclosure's really starting to create a more immersive experience. That's one of those big design elements that we've been working on over the last year, is exactly how do we grade the site in a really positive way? And I have to give a ton of kudos and support to our design team, who at this point have managed to get to a balanced site, meaning as so far, if our numbers are right, we're not looking at importing soil into this. We can work with all, with what's out there today, which is a pretty amazing accomplishment. You'll see some of these and some section graphics in a moment, but just in terms of the detail here, there's these big steep climbs that create, or in this case, it's actually a drop-down into a fenced moat to create separation between the two savannas. In the back here, there's this large birmingham to create hidden views or exclude the views of the care quarters in the back. So the goal is you're not able to see any of those care spaces in the back, that they're all screened off, and it's like you're looking off into the horizon across the savanna. Also in this screen is the lion area. There's two habitat spaces for those. Essentially, think about it, you have the large pride over here, and then a smaller area, maybe you've got young that need to be cared for separate from the rest of the collection at the time. There's meerkats, there's a small African mammal space along here, and then all these pathways that just bring you seamlessly through between the savannas and into this area. Below that is cheetah and the cheetah run, and then the rhino space in the back. This is an opportunity for expansion in the future phase to add additional yard space there, and then future hyena, wild dog, and then later in the back hippo. Moving to the east a little bit, we get into what we've historically called the discovery zone. I think it's now the fun zone, Jason. I think the names, the names changed like every other meeting we've had. I don't remember exactly, but this is where the carousel would be. There's a climbing structure and playground space for the kids, which interacts directly in with the thick-billed parrot habitat. There's some fencing, of course, some netting there to keep the kids and the birds apart, but you know, you can get right up close and have a really awesome experience as part of that. This is all, we talked earlier about inclusive design and ADA accessibility. This is being designed with those elements in mind, and particular ramps and access points for people and all manner of accessibility to be able to get up into that structure and have similar experiences. Below that is the animal care quarter, or the animal care hot center, the nutrition center, and that second café that I mentioned. We'll see some designs of that in a moment. It's flanked around by the lemur complex. This is a Phase 1B opportunity. What's really great from a storytelling aspect, the way we've been designing this, is as a visitor to the complex, you actually will be able to come in here and see sort of all three care aspects to the animal collection. As you'll come through this pathway, and again, we'll see an image in a moment, you'll be able to have views into the nutrition center where those meals are being prepared. You'll come around the corner and have views into the care hospital and see medical procedures and how the animals are cared for from a medical standpoint. And then as you round the last corner, you'll be able to have views directly into the lemur holding spaces and see where those animals are taken care of at night and where they sleep and, and how that sort of backup house operation works. We'll then continue around the last panel, which brings you back out on what we've historically called the green corridor. Yes, I know, it's shown in more of a brick-red color, but those are landscape architects for you. And along that corridor, you have the alligators, squirrel monkey with another opportunity to integrate the play structure in as part of a viewing space for the kids and those that are up in the structure to look at them. The gelada habitat, this is the, the ground, spacing, Jason, on an ape. Monkey, thank you. Ground monkey from Ethiopia. Sorry, it's a long day. Gelada actually has two care spaces to it, or two yard spaces to it, Gelada 1, Gelada 2, and you'll have some great views across from the dining area, looking out across those, we'll see some sections like that, I think, in a moment. Space for tortoise, there's some party rooms, classroom spaces that are tucked back there in Phase 1B. The okapi areas, this is a great opportunity. We'll have in Phase 1A, a yard space with care quarters behind. Phase 1B creates an enclosed aviary complex, so you can actually walk into the space. And actually, there's birds and colobus monkeys that are all part of that, and you really get an immersive experience as part of that. And then the flamingo aviary, which is a broader collection of birds. This has a walk-in component, so you can actually walk into the netting area, as many zoos have, and be able to experience sort of the inclusive, the immersive nature of that. And that brings you back around to the main entrance. There's giraffe feeding and a couple of other smaller habitat spaces that are back there. In terms of the design and comparing it back to what you saw a year ago, a lot of this, as I said, has moved around and shifted and really been refined. One great example of this, and something where, as we look at the budget and how do we dial this into something that makes good affordability sense, that café space was originally planned as an enclosed café, where you had glass viewing from inside the building out into Gelada. We've backed off from that, and instead, this is an open-air patio space. It's got umbrellas and canopy structures to provide protection from the, from the sun, but it's an open-air viewing across that space, so really bringing in those, those pricing numbers and thinking about how do we make this a really economically feasible project. Access overall into the site, just talk about that for a moment. So ideally, and the way we're designing this, the majority of traffic coming into Elk Grove to visit the zoo will come in off of I-99 to Camera. As Camera Road gets extended out to I-5, there'll be the connection there to bring folks from the west side in. We'll be directing everybody up Lots Parkway and into the roundabout complex at Long Classical. There'll be a variety of signage, whether static overhead sign, like you'd see sort of as you go into, say, the airport or along freeways, you've got that overhead sort of directional sign, this is what lane to be in, where you need to go. All of that would be up there and providing that direction to the driver. And then potentially some dynamic or digital messaging sign letting you know, hey, this parking lot's open, this parking lot's closed, go into this lane, here's how many spaces are available. We'll work up the details of that as we get into the construction design later. We're also designing all the roads with a variety of, not just vehicular access, but also dedicated pedestrian and separated bicycle connectivity. So there'll be separated bicycle facilities along B Drive, which is the western edge, and along Classical for folks that are coming in from the adjoining neighborhoods to the north and west of the site, to be able to get into the site and have that separated movement. On the Lots Parkway side, this will actually be more of a traditional 40-foot landscape corridor with an integrated Class 1 trail that's both bicycle and pedestrian along there. So you'll, that's, this will be a joined facility. And then there'll be, we're still working through some of the design elements and how we get people across Classical. Roundabouts are really great for this from a safety perspective because there are fewer conflict points between the pedestrian and the vehicle, better line of sites, and just general better operations for those intersections overall. So still a lot of details to work out here, but we're well on our way with those elements. So getting into the design and some of the architectural elements is another big place where we've done a lot over the last year. We now have real architectural site plans and rendering and floor plans for the three key buildings on the site. The first we'll look at here is the entry complex. So this is the perspective view as you're coming in from the parking lot. This has been designed as an opportunity maybe for some donation along the way from some, maybe some construction partners, opportunity for branding elements. Here we're showing an okapi with a giraffe and sort of that relationship, thinking about old and new in terms of the complex and, and the partnership across the region. This is the retail sales area accessible from inside. Here's guest services and windows where you can walk up and buy your tickets day-of, and then the gates that take you into the complex. Some of the design elements that are important in here in terms of the roof structure and how we've set that up, and the canopy and how that structurally be held, we're trying to bring in and bridge that gap between the built form and the natural environment and utilizing what looks more like tree trunk structure in supporting of that building and, and thinking about the natural element there. As you go through that, that entry, and you can turn around and look back towards the parking lot, this would be the back view of the building. So really, as you're exiting for the day, there's this great open glass wall where you can see all the great stuff to buy inside of the gift shop and opportunities to do, spend a little bit more of your money at the campus. So how do we then think about the animal spaces and the connection there? At the top, we have a section diagram which shows the connection, sort of slicing through the site from the entry complex on the left-hand side across the savanna. And as we move over, this section line then brings you all the way over into the beginning part of Lion, and you can start to see the rock work that forms at the backside of this. So the goal is, as you're here at the entry complex, you've got these great views looking out over the savanna. You're seeing the whole herd of giraffe and, and the other hoof stock that are there, opportunities for them to get fairly close, but then be held back safely from the guest experience or the guest areas. And then off in the distance with those sightlines, you're seeing the lions sort of up there on those rocks, sort of surveying out over the savanna. Moving up to the Giraffe Lodge, another building we've got architecture for. So here we've got the main entry coming in off the parking lot, so warm and inviting, similar architectural design elements to the main entry. We're trying to create an architectural nomenclature across the site, so not that every building is the same, but there are common elements that start to knit from an architectural and design perspective the campus together overall as one unifying concept. So we utilize some of the same roof forms. There's a little bit of different material forms here because of the relationship with the savanna. The lower image shows the entry from the zoo side itself, so you come in through these doors and you're greeted by the same host station, where they're able to then seat you into the interior of the restaurant. As you go through the interior and you come out to the lawn, the games lawn space, so this is looking back at the building and what that exterior space would be. So a lot of opportunity for dining, entertainment, and enjoyment of that space. And then behind Camera is then the view out to the savanna. And in that case, we have another section view which shows this. So here you are up at the patio, looking out across, and you're able to see across the entire savanna, and again, you've got Lion off in the distance. And here's a better view of what the rock formation would end up looking like. I do want to note that from a design perspective, and I'll go back to the site plan real quick. So in terms of the event dining, we've actually spent a ton of time trying to figure out how to get folks in and out of the event dining space without ruining the experience for the balance of the customers that are coming in regularly to, to visit this. So there's a dedicated events entry on the backside of the building with some clever doorwork to hide off the service area when you're coming in, maybe for a wedding or a corporate event. But similarly, there's a pathway that gets you to and from that event space back out to the main zoo itself. So there's an opportunity for people to be able to come and go and, as part of the night programming, think about how those experiences work. The way that's then set up and thinking about the grading work is we're able to bring those, that event pathway down, so it's really more sort of at level with the savanna itself. But the dining terrace at the restaurant is up higher, so you're looking out across those people and those those people, and those folks are not then obstructing your view or clouding your view of what that experience is. Next one to highlight is the Animal Care Center. So this is again, a building that's doing the job of three pieces. First is what we're calling Gelada Café. Again, this is the corn dog, this is the chicken nugget space, you know, giving the kids a quick meal at 11:30 when they're super starving because they've been running around for an hour at the site. So here, we're looking at this blue arrow from essentially the commons area, the terrace area where the seating is, back towards the building. So this is sort of all open with that similar trellis structure that we've got over at the main entry. You're seeing similar roof forms and some similar materials there. In this case, accentuating the entry with a tile component. Restroom's back behind with clear signage, making it accessible for folks who are easy to identify. As we swing around the building, you get the view into the animal care complex. So here are those windows looking into the nutrition center, where the meals are getting prepared for the animals. And then you come around that walkway and you're able to then see into the medical care space, where there may be as an examination going on or a medical procedure, or even a surgery in the surgery suite. So that's the big stuff we wanted to share. There is absolutely a lot more materials, more than would fit in the presentation tonight. We will be showcasing these at an open house event on Saturday, November 4th, at Meawak Elementary School in the multipurpose room. We have invitations going out to the kids at the school, because they're some of the immediate neighbors, as well as door hangers going out to the Sterling Meadows neighborhood. So everyone's invited, not just those folks, but everybody from across the community and across the region. Encourage you to come out, take a look at the materials. We will also have the design team with us that day, so the landscape architects will be there in person to help present some of this stuff as part of the stations that we have and be able to answer questions as well. Moving through the next couple of weeks, we're working on cleaning up and finalizing the environmental impact report. Our goal is to get that on the street just after the holidays, to have folks reading an EIR over Christmas. That's not any fun, I've done it. So after the new year, we'll be able to have that out for folks to review, 45-day comment period. We're going to work feverishly during that time, though, to work up the details of the financing plan, what the details of this partnership really look like to bring the project to fruition. We also are continuing, or the Society's continuing with their fundraising efforts. We'll have some information about that for the public on November 4th, in addition to what you can find on their website already. Those conversations across the region are continuing, and we're happy to support them in those dialogues. And then we're working up the operating agreement. So our goal is to bring all that to you via the Planning Commission later this spring for your ultimate consideration of the project. One last thing I will note, a great partnership that we've been working on is actually with some kids over at Franklin High School. This is very much a work in progress, but we got to see a preview of it yesterday with them, and I am super excited by all the hard work they're doing. The design team's actually put together a fairly good 3D model of the site, the way it's being designed, sort of thinking about Phase 1A and 1B in particular, but a little bit of the details in the phases, 2 through 4 components. And they have graciously provided that model to the kids over at Franklin High School and the Full Stack Development Club, Developer Club. They are working on trying to create a website for that model to live, so that anybody can get in and interact with it and walk around the campus and experience it in augmented reality of what that looks like. Lot of work still to do and a long way to go still, but they are making some great headway. And this is a great tie-in of this project with the City Smart City Plan, integration in with the school district, and I think we're, we're really fortunate to have a great teacher over at Franklin High and a great group of students over there that we're able to work with on this. So I wanted to make sure to highlight that. So that concludes the presentation this evening. Staff, as well as members from the Society, are here to answer questions if you have them.
All right, thank you for that excellent presentation. Before I go into public comment opportunity with Jason or Liz, did you want to add anything?
Hi, everyone, it's nice to see you. It has been a while.
Yeah, nice to see you.
There's probably not much we can add to what Mr. Jordan has just presented. I will tell you, it has been a great privilege to work with your incredibly capable and professional staff. What you saw tonight is an example of just a little bit of what they've been able to do over the past year, and we are so excited about the project. Obviously, we're here to answer any questions you have, but, you know, the excitement in the community, as you can tell from even the interactions that probably some of you have had, is just building. We recently had our gala in September, and we broke records in terms of our fundraising. The focus of that event was to raise money for this new zoo, and so the community is just so excited, and certainly we are. And other than that, I don't know if you want to add anything?
You know, my, my only commercial is to please come out to the zoo when you get a chance, so you could see Jay Gregory in person, Sacramento County's largest resident at 4,500 pounds. A southern white rhinoceros.
Well, thank you both. For the presentation, for your comments. So at this time, before we go into any council comments, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We do have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
I was sitting there thinking, wow, I've been to a lot of meetings like this. For instance, our soccer fields that we were going to have. We were going to get a big stadium here. The city buys 100 acres, we end up selling it. The soccer families haven't showed up. Spent a lot of money for that. District 56, there were some really great plans for District 56. Saw the schematics on that also. A lot of money spent, didn't really happen as, as intended or promised. And here we are with a zoo, and I really appreciate the staff report tonight and all the, the pictures and, and the big dreams, but I'm just wondering how much the dream's costing? And of course, we can get excited about it till it comes down to money. So of course, residents, if they're not realizing the money's going to come out of their pocket, could be excited too. So how much is this really going to cost? And we're not really discussing that. And so I'm, I'm hearing, you know, that we're going to do this in phases. The soccer fields, as it changed, was going to be done in phases. So how long will it take to have all the phases done? And will we be living with Phase 1 as savanna? And how much has the city committed to spending on that? Will this zoological park fall under mellow roots? The costs that aren't fixed to some of those homeowners, which can be increased at your will every year? I think we really need to address some of those before we get overly excited about this coming to Elk Grove. I hear that it's going to improve our, you know, economic benefits of the project. I'd like to know directly how it's going to help every single resident and how it's going to serve every single resident here, especially if we look at another sales tax in the future, we look at, those are questions I have. Great plans, great plans, can love it. But I also know that our birth rate is declining in the state, and so will there be those families that we want going there when it's eventually done? I know that this was just a report, you don't have to make any decisions on it, but I'd really like some of the finances to be presented, like how much have we already spent along the way, right? What's the cost so far for developing all these plans that will be in a binder? I just would like to know that as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That is our final speaker on this item, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open it up for any council comments or questions. I'll start to the right. Councilmember Robles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Jordan, thank you for the presentation. I know it's one of several conversations that we're going to be having in the next coming months. And, Ms. Lynn Wheat, thank you for, for bringing these concerns, because these are, I can guarantee you that a lot of constituents have the same questions that you have brought up. Look forward to hearing in the next coming months, when it comes to finances, how we're going to pay for it and what we've spent so far and, but thank you, because it was an in-depth presentation, so we appreciate it.
Councilmember Brewer?
I want to thank Mr. Jordan for the presentation. I also want to thank Mr. Jacobs and Ms. Stollard for coming out tonight and providing your comments, and also sharing some of the efforts done by the Sacramento Zoological Society. A lot of the excitement is not just here in Elk Grove alone, it's all over the region. Because I'm talking to people in Lodi Stockton, Sacramento, Elk Grove, Folsom, and they all have that same shared enthusiasm, and they're also willing to open up whatever resources they can to provide for the construction of the park. Because I think one of the biggest concerns people have had, and you can't compare past projects with this project, because that's apples and oranges, and you really cannot compare this with the high-speed rail, because that's an unfair assessment as well, because some people have mentioned that and, and put them in the same sentence. And I think is, when you have something that provides a public benefit, region-wide, people want to see that, and when they want to see something happen, we all find a way to have that shared responsibility. And so I, I'm very excited in seeing how this is going, how this is progressing. I know people have concerns about this happening in phases, but I think there is a, there's a commitment from this council, as well as the city and all related stakeholders, that they want to see this project happen in full fruition. And the partnership we have with UC Davis in providing the veterinarian services can't be underestimated as well. There is a shared regional commitment to making this project work, and we just have to be eternal optimists in seeing it through, because I think this is going to be a true jewel, not just for Elk Grove, but for the entire region, and seeing, and seeing the Sacramento Zoo coming to Elk Grove.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also want to start by thanking Mr. Jordan and all our staff and the design team. It's a lot of work. I mean, it took a lot to present it all, but there's even so much more work that, that went into all that. And just as a, as a nerd balancing sight, balancing the, the site is quite a feat out there when you look at how flat it all is. So not be, having to bring in dirt for those, those mounts is, is a, is a great accomplishment. I also want to thank Mr. Jacobs and Ms. Stollard for being here. Congratulations, Ms. Stollard, on your recent reappointment to the Zoological Society to lead that, that board. Right person for the job. And then I echo my colleagues' sentiments on thanking Ms. Wheat for her comments. I think it is a very pretty concern on, on the costs. But I will say that this is why we're, we're, we're spending the money. We, we decided to spend the money to further the analysis, the feasibility, in every step of the way, including the environmental analysis. And at any given time, we can pull the plug. I think your, your examples were appropriate as well. The soccer field wasn't going to make sense in the end, we got a better use for that, and so now Kubota's going in there. So the decision, I think, to, to sell at that, the, the property then was, was good. District 56 also changed somewhat, but we, we think we demonstrated our ability to execute. We didn't build the, the children's museum and performing arts center yet, but it is planned. But again, because of costs, we haven't moved forward with it. The aquatic center, the, the high dive was going to be expensive, so we nixed that. So there is a reason why we, we do these things. We have to spend a little money to make sure that the investment is, is worth the, the big capital cost. And yes, it, it, there is a significant amount of money spent at this point in time, just for the concepts, the design, the analysis. But again, when you look at the big scheme of things, in other words, the, the entire capital cost to build the project, hundreds of millions, what we're spending now is a, is a drop in the bucket to decide whether that investment is worth it. And so I'm encouraged, though, by the, the, what can be, the potential. I think a lot of the families here are excited for what, what may come, and I'm, you know, I'm anxious to see how the information through the environmental analysis, through the, the cost analysis, the financing, when that decision comes next year, I look forward to, to making that decision at that time. But I am excited for the potential and what can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Jordan. I appreciate the, the work and the presentation, and I know, again, it isn't one person, it is a whole team of folks that are doing it, and I want to express my appreciation to the team. I also want to thank Mr. Jacobs and Ms. Stollard for, for coming down here to Elk Grove tonight. Again, I appreciate you could be in your, in your warm cozy home this evening, but thank you for sharing this, this evening with us and, and being here to support this. I, I do appreciate the presentation, I like, I like what I'm seeing. Most importantly for me, though, will be very, coming very, very soon, and that's relative to cost estimates and a financing plan. I don't want to be disagreeable, but I think, and I, and I can appreciate that there are folks across the region that are excited about this, but it is the residents of Elk Grove, the taxpayers of Elk Grove, who are the ones who will be the ones paying for this. I, I don't see any other way of this, along with the, the private financing, but in the end, it sits on the back pair, on the back of the Elk Grove taxpayers, and that's what I'm most concerned about. So with that, thank you very much for the presentation today, and I look forward to the cost estimates and finance plan in the spring.
Thank you. Excellent comments from my colleagues. Thank you for the presentation. And of course, to our returning president, Liz Stollard, from the Sacramento Zoological Society, and of course, Jason Jacobs, thank you for being here. You know, this is one of those once-in-a-lifetime opportunities, so I'm excited about the prospect of doing this project here in our city, which would be a tremendous civic amenity, not just for Elk Grove, the entire region, the entire state. What is it, like some, over 30 years? It's the first zoo that would possibly be constructed. It's been like 30-plus years. So this is, you know, this is one of those unique moments in recognizing the magnitude of that, not of course, you know, the, the financing, which is critical, but also what that means in terms of generating revenue and our economic development prospects and jobs. I can tell you, when I'm out in the community and everyone knows, I am very visible and out in the community. This is one of those projects that I get asked about on a daily basis, and 99% of the time, it is fabulous. People are excited, they want to hear the update, they want to know when it might be open. So there is a lot of buzz out there in our city, not just the region, but in our city. These are conversations happening at Costco, which is where I go regularly. Costco, Rayleigh's, Trader Joe's, people will come up to me, what's happening with the zoo, and we're so excited about that. I've gone, I've done presentations to numerous business groups throughout the city and the region. The Realtors, we just did a presentation last week here with the Sacramento Association Realtors for the Elk Grove Group specifically. They're very excited about it. Region business, this was a topic of discussion at their retreat. Very excited about, again, the economic development, the jobs, what it means for the region in saving the zoo, because that's what it's about. It's, it comes back to, they have outgrown the zoo. It has to go somewhere. And thankfully, we possibly have the space to make this sort of vision a reality. Elk Grove Unified School District, the largest school district in Northern California. The teachers, the staff, the students, they, they are excited. The educational opportunities that comes with this is tremendous. I love that we've partnered with Franklin High School with some of those, the, the digital content. I think that's great, that's very, they're very talented out there. I know they do a lot of great work in the area, and so the fact that we can partner with them and leverage those young minds and utilizing those skills, I think that is brilliant. This has been an excellent progress report. I attended the zoo gala, and the buzz from those that don't live in Elk Grove, they're, they're very excited about a possible future zoo here in our city. And actually, this afternoon, I had lunch with Mayor Steinberg in Sacramento, and he reiterated his support, and he's cheering for us, he's cheering for our city, because he recognized this wasn't something that they could, they could take on, considering all of the other challenges and other priorities that their community has identified. And so he's cheering for, for Elk Grove as well, so it was really nice to hear that sort of regional cooperation. So this is, you know, what I appreciate is that this has been a transparent process from day one. We are, as we get information and analyze the information, we're sharing the information. And that has been our commitment as a city council, to share at those appropriate benchmarks. So as the next phases develop, we will have more information that we can share, including, of course, most importantly, the financing plan. But all of these are happening in various stages in a very transparent manner, and I want to thank and recognize the staff for, for doing that, doing that excellent work and then creating opportunities for yet even more stakeholder engagement. I think that that is important, to make sure that not only, you know, we don't only just want to be excited about this, but there needs to be buy-in, there needs to, they need to be a part of this process. So thank you for doing all of that. So thank you for doing all of that great work. So I don't have any other comments on this item, but this is just received the information. So thank you for that. I look forward to the next series of updates. But this was an excellent progress report, so great work. All right. With that, we will transition to item 9.3.
And item 9.3 is to consider appointment of one voting member to the Diversity Inclusion Commission and one alternate member to the Historic Preservation Committee. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Jason Lindgren, your City Clerk. We had a recruitment open at the end of August for a vacancy that occurred on our Diversity and Inclusion Commission that got delayed a little bit. And we opened, left the door open a little bit for a few more applications. You have 16 applicants for the Diversity Inclusion Commission before you for a decision this evening. In addition, our Historic Preservation Committee has two alternate positions, which have remained open since January of 2023. And we had an applicant expressing their interest in order to seek appointment to that committee. Today, we did receive information from another sitting member of our Diversity Inclusion Commission, Mr. Grijjatinder Singh Randhala, has looked at his future obligations looking into 2024 and said that he'd be winding down his service on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission at the end of this year due to just the obligations that he's seeing in 2024. With that, it's kind of that we have a pending vacancy. We also have a very robust applicant pool here this evening. And what we would have the opportunity to do, Mayor, if you were so inclined, is to make an indication of if you wanted to do a second appointment to the Diversity Inclusion Commission. And what we could do as staff is bring that back administratively and kind of tie it up as we switch into the new year.
Absolutely. And that is my intent, to make two nominations. One for the immediate filling the vacancy, and the other one would not take place until January, when our current commissioner would no longer be serving. And so I imagine, similar to like how we handled the Measure E, it would come back in that format. But I will be moving a name forward this evening. And that person would then just come back under consent, probably, is what I imagine. Procedurally, that needs to take place. All right, very good. Well, we have a number of speakers here lined up to speak for this item. So I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity for this item. And our first speaker is Letitia Aguilar, followed by Reyna Torongo.
Synthamana, my name is Letitia Aguilar. I'm interested in the City of Elk Grove Diversity and Inclusion Commission seat. I am a California Tribal Heritage meaning, my ancestors are native to this area. My tribe is Pinoleville Pomo Nation, making up of a small percentage of the population. It is rare that I'm standing here as a woman of California tribal descent. I would like to share with you a little bit about who I am. I'm a mother of three, walking in my ancestors' prayer of resilience. An Elk Grove resident with children enrolled in the Elk Grove District, as a business owner of Cali Family Fund also. I am a community member that has offered extensive amount of community service, giving back to my community, even serving five years as Board Secretary of another local nonprofit before establishing my own. I'm currently a CEO of Native Sister Circle, a local nonprofit based in Elk Grove, serving youth, families, and community. We are located two doors from the library on Elk Grove floor and within walking distance of the Elk Grove District Office, schools, and the Wilton Tribal Office. Collaborating with many partners and building a network of resources is important. I've done extensive building and planning, hosting workshops, conferences, marches, and civic mobilization in partnership with other entities and organizations such as the local tribe Wilton, working alongside the current chairman and the tribal leaders across California, as well as Assembly Member Ramos, to push policy and give our youth a platform. The California Native Vote Project, Shingle Springs Tribal Taniff, Youth Forward. I serve on the Native American Health Task Force with the Sacramento Native American Health Center. I'm also a part of a sisterhood collective coalition that is made up of various cultural background groups, Rage Project, Soul Collective, Earth Mama Healing, AALP, IQ Squad, and Building Healthy Communities within the greater Sacramento area. I've created platforms for youth in partnership with the Sacramento Kings and Golden One Center for Native Heritage Night. Much of what I do as a mother, community member, and CEO, and tribal woman is to create equitable spaces and change for our community. I hope to be the first Pomo woman serving on your commission. I ask you allow me to join you in making our history. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Next up is Reyna Torongo, followed by Tweely, or AKA Kelly.
Madam Mayor, esteemed council, it is always a pleasure to have the opportunity to address you and to be here today as a community member in support of a hopeful appointee, Letitia Aguilar, to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Aside from being a mentor to tribal and community youth through her nonprofit Native Sister Circle, Letitia would be an amazing asset and contributor to our commission. She has worked alongside several tribal communities, youth organizations, and assembly members, most notably Assembly Member Ramos, as an advocate for MMIP, Native Ed, statue removals, and so much more. Not only is she native, but she descends directly from a California tribe, Pinoleville Pomo Nation. With that said, when we speak of diversity and inclusion, you cannot do so without starting without the First People of California. And as Mr. Lindsay said earlier, it's a beautiful thing to be seen. And we're not always often seen. Her appointment would be paramount to the diversity and inclusivity we seek on the commission. Should she be appointed, she would be the first California Native woman to be appointed to this commission. And to do so right before Native Heritage Month this November would be sort of fitting and historic. I greatly appreciate your consideration and opportunity you have provided me as a member of the commission and as an Indigenous Latina myself. But it's a beautiful thing. And I know you guys work so hard. And your commitment is always there to diversity and inclusion. I know your appointments will be fitting no matter what. But we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kelly, followed by Katie Care.
A little short. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Today, I stand before you with great enthusiasm and a deep sense of purpose as I announce my application for the City of Elk Grove Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. It is an honor to have this opportunity to address you all and share my passion for fostering a diverse and inclusive community. First and foremost, I would like to highlight my role as the President of NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce. This position has allowed me to actively engage with individuals from several backgrounds and cultures, promoting unity and understanding. Through our chapter, we have successfully hosted events such as Lunar New Year and Mid-Autumn Festival, which have served as a platform to spread our rich Vietnamese culture and traditions. These celebrations have not only brought joy and happiness to our community, but have also fostered a sense of inclusivity and appreciation of our diversity. In addition to my role as the President of NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce, I have actively served as one of the board members of Asian Real Estate Association of Realtors, otherwise known as ARIA, dedicated to promoting sustainable homeownership opportunities in Asian-American communities by creating a powerful national voice of housing and real estate professionals that serve their dynamic market. I currently serve on another DEI Committee within our Association of Realtors. I also helped organize a monthly Business Watch meeting within our monthly Business Watch meeting for businesses in and around in a section of Stockton Boulevard and 65th Street with the District Attorney's Office, Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, and Office of Economic Department of Sacramento, where we discuss issues affecting businesses on Stockton Boulevard and 65th Street. These experiences have allowed me to develop a deep understanding of the unique challenges faced by different communities and the importance of creating an inclusive environment that celebrates diversity. Furthermore, I am deeply committed to promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion within our city. I firmly believe that every individual, regardless of their race, gender, or socioeconomic status, should have equal opportunities to thrive and succeed. By serving on the DEI Committee, I aim to contribute my skills, experiences, and perspective to ensure that our city becomes a place where everyone feels valued, respected, and included. I understand that building a diverse and inclusive community requires collaboration, empathy, and open dialogue. As a member of the committee, I will actively listen to the concerns and ideas of our residents, working tirelessly to implement policies and initiatives that promote equity and justice. I will strive to create an environment where everyone's voice is heard and where we can celebrate the unique contributions each individual brings to this community. I humbly request your support of my application for the City of Elk Grove Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Katie Care, followed by Tree Nguyen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Katie Care, and I'm here to show my support for my friend Kelly Lee, or Tweely. I have known her for almost 10 years on a personal level and a professional level. So on a personal level, she is a dedicated wife and a mother of four. That does not make her tired. It makes her a superwoman. She is like an energy buddy, like naturally. She has a ton of energy. She is one of the most generous and thoughtful giving people I know. On a professional level, she's like the same way. She's got that high-energy level. She just gets things done super fast at a very high and excellent level in everything she does. She's very, very dedicated. But a big reason why I think she's a great candidate for this is because of her true leadership skills. I've just seen her, she's very, she has this skill of, or this talent, just kind of bring people together, kind of move, getting people together to go towards a common goal. We always feel very heard, respected, and motivated and inspired by her to do something together for the greater good. So I don't envy you right now because it seems like there's some great applicants. But I really, truly believe that having someone like Kelly on the DEI Committee would be a great benefit for this city and this community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Tree Nguyen, followed by Kathy Lee.
Good evening. My name is Tree Nguyen. I'm good at supporting Kelly. So I've known Kelly for four, almost five years now. And I met her at one of the ribbon-cutting ceremonies that she's always involved with, I think with the NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce, where at the time, she was an ambassador, always going around the community, helping small businesses and helping anybody that needs, get a good upstart to their business. And of course, now she's the President of the NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce. I've always been impressed by work ethics, her integrity, a positive attitude, and as Katie mentioned, her energy. She doesn't stop, consistently goes above and beyond of what's required. One good example is that, was that during the Mid-Autumn Festivals several weeks ago at the Laguna Town Hall here in Elk Grove. And without going too much into details, because it was like months and months of planning and hours on phone calls and planning and preparation. But what stood out most to me, and for a lot of us, was that on the day of the festival, 5:00 in the morning, you roll up there and Kelly's already there. And she just want to get a head start, making sure everything's in place and making sure that everything goes smoothly. That's just the person that she is. So her commitment to the community, to the people that she works with, is unquestioned. And I wholeheartedly recommend Kelly for the position with the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. And I strongly believe that she'll be a great addition to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Lee, followed by Rachel Simi. Simi.
Hello, everyone. I'm here to show support to my friend Kelly. So I wholeheartedly recommend Kelly for a spot on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. She's the President of NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce, and she's done an excellent job bringing cultural events in our Little Sayon in South Sacramento for these past couple of years. And she has successfully brought the Mid-Autumn Festival to Elk Grove for the very first time last month. She's very dedicated to sharing our Vietnamese culture and wanted to bring it to Elk Grove. And one thing that stood out to me the most is when we had the little incident in Little Sayon, she was the one that stepped out, talked to businesses, and make sure to come with, to plan with the business meeting every other month. So I do believe that Kelly's heart, word, and passion for the community involvement will make her a perfect fit for the role. She understands the importance of celebrating our differences and making everyone feel welcome. Her experience and vision will greatly contribute to the commission's mission of creating a more diverse, accessible, and inclusive government and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Simi, followed by Tasha Johnson.
Hi, sorry. My name is Rachel Simi, and I'm actually here to introduce myself. I applied for, put in my application for the Alternate Historical Preservation Committee. I just wanted to say a few things about myself. I have had a huge passion for history since I was a kid. I have lived in Elk Grove all my life. I recently graduated, a couple of years back during the pandemic, from CSU Monterey Bay with a major in Humanities and Communication and Concentration History. One of my focuses has been with museums. And I just love the idea. Elk Grove has such a vast history. I currently work at a Dust Bowl in Old Town at the brewery. And just being there and learning so much, I have customers who have lived in Elk Grove their entire life and tell me about, you know, they're like talking about the early like 1920s, 1930s, and just their experience. And I think that the history of Elk Grove has so much to offer to everyone. And yeah, I would greatly appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tasha Johnson. And our last speaker signed up is Jenny Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Tasha Johnson. I am originally from Sacramento, California. And I've been gone for almost 20 years. And I said, "I'm never coming back to Sacramento," because I was 18. And, you know, 20...
We all said that.
Yeah, whoever said that, yes. 20-something-odd years later, I'm back in Elk Grove with a husband and four kids. And I kind of am tired sometimes. So whatever you're doing, let me know. But I'm really, really excited to be back. And I never thought I would say that, especially in Elk Grove. And I'll offer a caveat for that. Telling my age, Elk Grove was the only high school that existed when I was at McClatchy. And so it felt like it was in LA if we had to travel for a game or a track meeting. And I was like, "Oh, my gosh, we're going to see the cows," right? So when my parents moved here while I was gone, I was like, "What? Elk Grove? What are you talking about?" And so, you know, it slowly grew on me. And moving back, I wanted to move closer to the aging parents and offer some help. And I was like, "Okay, we'll look in Sacramento." But being here in Elk Grove, my four boys have matriculated through elementary, middle, and high school here so far. And I am in love. And my friend who is watching this right now, who went to Elk Grove High School when I was in high school, is cracking up because I'm making this statement, but I mean it. I have dedicated over 20-plus years to my career in both social justice, diversity, equity, inclusion. My career started in education. And before it was named any of those things, that's what I practiced. And then it got named, right? And for 10 years, I taught social justice lessons and issues in Los Angeles Unified School District, throughout the school district. And that's pretty large in Mammoth. And from there, I developed curriculum for professional development workshops for teachers, for adults, et cetera. And so my pathway, both professionally and personally, has led me here. And my kids have to endure the lectures at the dinner tables and the questions about how school was, but how school was for them. I'm excited to bring any type of personality because I have a little bit, and some expertise. I have a lot of it, and a listening ear, and excitement, and whatever our city needs to continue to grow and evolve and serve our community members, I'm happy to be here.[1767.13] You know, diversity sometimes causes division and it will be my quest to not have that. And when you talk about inclusion, you can't forget about belonging. And I told my son inclusion and belonging, and he was like, "Well, what's the difference?" He's nine years old. I'm like, "Well, inclusion's like, come on to the table, eat the chicken, eat the green beans and just eat, you're included." But if I ask you, "What else do you want to eat?" And you get a chance to say what we want at the table, you belong, I see you. And he said, "Mommy, I want to belong." Thank you.
Thank you. Nice. Our final speaker is Jenny Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. My name is Jenny Rodriguez. I identify as she, her and ella. I am a Latina who also identifies as Mexican-American. Born and raised in Sacramento, daughter of immigrants and once labeled a teen mom, but proud to say despite the adversity, also first generation college graduate, both undergrad and graduate studies. I'm a proud mother of four children, all students of the Elk Grove Unified School District, two of which have now graduated and two others that are still on their journey through middle and high school. I'm a proud Girl Scout mom, a leader and board member of a professional network known as the Association of Latino Professionals for America and co-lead the Latinos Unidos for Action, known as Luna, an employee resource group at the Sacramento Municipal Utility District, known as SMUD. I'm also past leader of known organizations such as the Sacramento State Latinx Alumni Association, served in the inaugural cohort of SMUD's Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Council and a graduate of the inaugural cohort of the Nueva Epoque Leadership Program, a program designed for members of the Latinx community that has a goal of building leadership capacity within the community to prepare and empower Latinx leaders to influence business and civic policy decisions. In addition, my daily work is in economic development, specifically serving as a partnership lead to help amplify our local small businesses and be the connector in supporting local partners within the community, helping support SMUD's vision to be a powerful partner for an inclusive and zero-carbon economy. My goal in listing my accomplishments is to help provide an understanding of my journey, which ultimately supports my goal with joining the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. I aim to be a resource and working in supporting the commission in reaching their goals within their three tenants of education promotion, to be an ambassador and providing the council feedback. For me, diversity and inclusion is not about our, not always about our race, but also about our lived experiences and how we need to ensure that in the end we feel as though we belong in our beautiful city of Elk Grove. My goal is to continue to inspire other Latinos like myself to be, to not be afraid to step up and get involved and take a seat at the table. In our culture, we're often taught to stay quiet and others may be more comfortable in speaking up, but by remaining quiet, people will forget that we are in the room. It is my mission to continue blazing the trail so that others behind me don't have to work so hard to be heard. I also want to congratulate and thank the existing commission for the work that has been done in the recent years. I've enjoyed seeing the representation at different, of our different cultures, but I know that the commission is working so much, on so much more and I'm here and ready to roll up my sleeves and continue the work. I thank you for your time and wish you all a wonderful evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. And that, I believe you were our final speaker on this. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. And I will do the easiest one first, and that is the appointment to the Historic Preservation Committee. I will bring forward Rachel and Simi for the vacancy.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Congratulations.
I just, I love your passion for history too. Where'd you go?
Somewhere here, right there.
Oh, there you are, yeah.
The next one's obviously much harder. We have excellent, excellent candidates, 16 excellent candidates. So it's always looking at sort of the current makeup of the commission, what voices are missing, district representation, not as important as much as, you know, your lived experiences and what you all bring to the table. I spoke to the assigned staff and got some feedback from them. So this, you know, and it's very challenging, as you can all imagine. But for the first nomination, and this would be for the immediate vacancy that we want to fill, so this person would start essentially immediately. I would like to bring forward Kelly Lee for consideration for the seat that's available right now. She's done great work in our community. I love that there's great focus now on Elk Grove and you've brought up a wonderful festival. I was happy to be a part of it. But I've been watching you for the last few years. And yeah, she is the Energizer Bunny and I'm not sure where she finds the time. And she has the most beautiful little girl who's just fabulous, but she makes time for her community. And that's what really shines. I've had the opportunity to observe you over the last few years and you genuinely authentically care. I know everyone cares and you're all doing an excellent job. So it's not to take away from your qualifications, but we only have so many seats. So for this consideration, I bring Kelly's name forward.
Yeah, Mayor, I wholeheartedly agree. All the applicants are great. I, especially the folks, the four that spoke tonight, not just because of their presence, but they all had great stories and perspectives. And I love the coming back to Sacramento one, two. But I support your decision with Kelly as well.
So we have consensus on Kelly for this vacancy?
Yeah, definitely.
Three here?
And, because I, definitely watching Kelly Lee, working in the community, working with the NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce. And I'm very happy and proud to be working with the NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce on the upcoming Christmas Toy Drive, working closely with Kevin Nguyen and putting that event together and securing District 52. So, looking forward to working with you with more on that, but also working with you on the DENI Commission as the immediate appointee. So definitely.
Thank you. Are we good? All right, we're good on Kelly for this vacancy. So congratulations. One more thing to put on your plate. The next one's going to be a little harder, so again, keep in mind, this one wouldn't start until January. But because we did receive the resignation from Mr. Randawa, who served faithfully for a number of years for personal and professional commitments, we had a great pool of applicants, so it made sense to fill that vacancy tonight and then reaffirm it, I think is it in December, where it would come back. And so, you know, again, 16 wonderful applicants. So then I look at who's reached out, who's done some of that additional, who's come tonight, who's applied before. That also matters because one of the things that we always remind past applicants who may not have gotten the nod is to be tenacious and to keep, you know, their vacancies do come up. So please keep those in mind. And so, one person, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you may have applied three times. And that is Jenny Rodriguez, who's applied a number of times. So, you know, with all respect to Ms. Tarango, I absolutely also support Lethicia Aguilar and of course, Tasha, you did a wonderful presentation. But we do look at for consideration those that really keep coming back because they want to be a part of this and continue to apply. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe, Jenny, are you here? I know you've applied. Is this your third or fourth?
I want to say it's my third in person, one of them I was-
Yeah, so, and that speaks volumes of your dedication. You clearly want to be a part of this, of this commission. You have lived history, you bring a lot of valuable resources and I think that we would only be enhanced with your representation. And then I would suggest obviously to Lethicia and Tasha to please stay involved. These are open meetings. Your input, just because you're not a voting member, doesn't mean you don't get to have input and say on how the commission is shaped and the policy considerations and the events and so forth. But my second person for consideration tonight, because of your tenacity, but you also bring invaluable resources and I do believe that our commission would be enhanced with your caliber of services, would be Jenny Rodriguez.
I support that, yeah.
Are we good with Jenny?
So, I just want to say that it's always difficult to select someone because you guys are, you women are amazing. I can't use a different word, but you know, you are amazing. And it's difficult to decide the work you do within the community. It's just, it blows me away with everything that you do from the state level to the federal level, to who you serve, who you're making sure you're mentoring. It just blows me away. So please do not be discouraged because of today. Please keep on coming and staying involved in, which you're already doing. So I don't even need to say anything because I know you're still going to be kicking a whole bunch of butt out there. So thank you for that. Tasha, welcome back. And I said the same thing too when I was going to college and I ended up back as well.
Yeah.
There's no place I'd come.
I appreciate your voice today because what you said does resonate with a lot of us and the, how you keep on pushing the envelope and making sure. And you were doing this even before what it was called. So thank you for that. And Ms. Rodriguez, I've seen you here for quite some time. I've also seen you involved in the community. I know that a lot of the SMUD wraps that are wrapped around is because what you've been doing and pushing that. I've seen your work in Nueva Epoque. I've seen what you've been doing there. And I know what you've been doing with Latinx as far as in SAC State. So I'm looking forward to hearing your voice on the, on the commission and yeah.
So to, for Lethicia and to Tasha, please again, you know, as we just moved forward, Ms. Rodriguez, she was tenacious, she came back, she didn't give up, she continued to apply. Vacancies do come up, so please attend the meetings, be a part of those meetings, help shape those discussions. Because that is just one of the best ways to continue to give back, but also to continue to be engaged on this commission. So with that, we have consensus, obviously here tonight from Ms. Rodriguez. So, and then just know that that would not be until January. So we will reaffirm you in our intent is, at our December meeting so that you can begin come January to serve on the commission. So congratulations to our two new appointees. As you heard, everybody's qualified, the packet here, if you all had an opportunity to see it, we have wonderfully dedicated residents who want to serve. So I am just so grateful to each and every one of you, whether you applied, whether you attended in person or you applied. It's heartwarming to see that our community steps up and wants to serve. So thank you all for attending, those that did, and thank you to all of our amazing applicants. So with that, we will move on to our next item, which is our council comments, reports and future agenda items. I'll start to the left. Anything to report?
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing to report other than Sacramento Public Library tomorrow. And two by two, do we have that? The two by twos on the calendar with CSD, is that tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow, yeah. Tomorrow at two, or sorry, 4:00 at CSD Admin Building.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. Councilmember Brewer?
Along with Vice Mayor Spies, Sacramento Public Library Commission tomorrow at 3:00 PM.
Nothing to report.
All right, I waive my report. So thank you. With that, we will adjourn our meeting at 8:50. Thank you, everyone.